All right. Good morning, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call the Tuesday, September 10th, Commission Meeting to Order. We're going to start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the Armed Forces, followed by an invocation by Dr. Christina Moore, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Laura Moss. If everybody would please rise.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for this opportunity to provide invocation. Father, in the name of Jesus Christ and Naz, we thank you for your grace, we thank you for your mercy, we thank you for your loving kindness. Father, we ask you to heal that which needs to be healed, mend that which needs to be mended, restore that which needs to be restored. Father, you say whatever we bind in earth, you're binding in heaven. Whatever we loose in earth, you will loosen heaven. We bind up the spirit of chaos, conflict, in our community of in and all sorts. God, we lose unity, we lose oneness, we lose love in that more abundantly, and we forever give you all the glory, honor, power, and dominion that's due unto you. In Jesus Christ's name, amen. And it is so.
Amen.
As tomorrow, we observe 9/11 at a number of ceremonies around the county, I'd like to offer a special thank you to our own Indian River Fire Rescue and our own first responders. God bless. I pledge allegiance-
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Commissioners, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none?
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And with that, we will move on to proclamations and presentations. Our first proclamation is designating the month of September 2024 as Hunger Action Month, which will be read by Commissioner Moss and presented to the Treasure Coast Food Bank, staff, and volunteers. If you guys would like to come on up to the podium with whoever you have, Commissioner Moss will take it from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Proclamation designating the month of September 2024 as Hunger Action Month. Whereas hunger and poverty remain issues of grave concern in the United States, the state of Florida, and on the Treasure Coast, with 250,000 children, adults, seniors, and veterans experiencing food insecurity on a weekly basis. And whereas, Indian River County is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our county and to support efforts to serve the needs of Indian River County citizens. And whereas, Indian River County is committed to working with the Treasure Coast Food Bank in educating people about the role and importance of food banks and other hunger relief organizations in addressing hunger and bringing attention to the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas, food banks and hunger relief organizations across the country, including the Treasure Coast Food Bank, are coordinating Hunger Action Day on September 10th, 2024, and will continue to host numerous events throughout the month of September to shed light on this important issue and encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in our local communities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the month of September 2024 be designated as Hunger Action Month in Indian River County, and the Board encourages all citizens to exercise observance. Adopted this 10th day of September 2024, Board of County Commissioners, Indian River County, Florida, and signed by all five Commissioners. And welcome. Please tell us more about your plans.
Thank you so much. My name is Deb Newfeld, and I'm here on behalf of the Treasure Coast Food Bank. The first thing I must say is, this commission, above all else in our Treasure Coast community, are the best in terms of wearing the orange. You absolutely are the best. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Now for the official stuff. On behalf of the President, Judy Cruz, staff, volunteers, Board of Directors, I'd like to thank you for proclaiming September, and even September 10th, as Hunger Action Month, otherwise known as HAM. As a member of the Feeding America Network of Food Banks, Treasure Coast Food Bank is leading the fight against hunger in our community by securing millions of meals and providing them to people facing hunger. We're proud to partner with more than 300 local food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other emergency food providers throughout the Treasure Coast. Throughout the month of September, Treasure Coast Food Bank will be hosting many events that include the Fourth Annual OutRun Hunger 5K. Now, it doesn't have to be a run. You can walk the 5K, which is not very far, and it's at Causeway Cove Marina in Fort Pierce, September 21. So if you're interested, just hit stophunger.org/ham. Now, I would like a little audience participation. You may think I'm crazy at first, but you'll see the light in the end. One equals eight. I'll repeat. One equals eight. I want you all to repeat with me. One equals eight. One equals eight. How is that possible? I want you to remember that $1 feeds eight people. One equals eight. So imagine if you just donate a $20 bill. You've fed 160 people. Isn't that fabulous? That's how well the food bank works. Thank you for your participation. We appreciate it. Have a great day.
Would you like to come up and get your proclamation?
You want to try it again, but I think they got it.
Do you want to get in the picture with her? Okay.
You as well.
All right. Our next proclamation is designating Patricia Draper as the poet laureate of Indian River County, Florida. This will be presented by myself to Ms. Draper. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and then if you will, I don't know if you prepared a poem, which would be fabulous, or a few words. Okay, wonderful. All right. It's my pleasure to read a proclamation designating Patricia Draper as the poet laureate of Indian River County, Florida. Whereas Patricia Draper has been writing poetry for many years and is deeply respected for her leadership in the porch poets of the Laura Riding Jackson Foundation. And whereas Patricia Draper is recognized throughout Florida and nationally for her many beautiful and heartfelt poems fitting with the character and values of Indian River County, including Cousins Interrupted and Nana Has Something to Say. And whereas Patricia Draper has shared her poems to promote awareness of Indian River County and the appreciation of poetry at neighborly gatherings, special occasions, public workshops, and exhibits. And whereas, the Indian River County poet laureate is an honorary position and carries with it the esteem and appreciation of the citizens of Indian River County. And whereas, Indian River County may call upon its poet laureate to compose poems for county occasions and other government events worthy of commemoration. And whereas, the Laura Riding Jackson Foundation, a 501(c)(3) organization, recommends the Board of County Commissioners designate Patricia Draper as Indian River County's poet laureate. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners, Indian River County, Florida, with appreciation and admiration, on this day, recognize Patricia Draper as the poet laureate of Indian River County, Florida, effective September 1st, 2024. Adopted this 10th day of September 2024 and signed by all five county commissioners. And Ms. Draper, I'd just like to say congratulations. We are looking forward to your tenure and representation of us. Big shoes to fill following in Mr. Sexton's footsteps, but I know you're up for it, and I can't wait to hear what you have prepared and what you plan to do.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Adams. I'd like to thank all of you county commissioners for this designation and to the Laura Riding Jackson Foundation for their selection. I'd also like to thank members of the porch poets for their support and encouragement. They challenge me on a regular basis and make me a better poet. Poetry is literary art. It is essential. It speaks to the human need for creativity and meaning. Here is an Ars Poetica I wrote for the occasion, and it's written in the format of a hibun, which the Japanese invented in the 17th century. Ars poetica. When you write a poem, remember this. Hunt for magic. Scavenge syllables that surprise at the corner of craft and chaos. Caress those thoughts. That word salad in your mind, ticking in time, don't worry about making sense until you see it on paper, and then turn everything upside down. Cast convention in the crosshairs. Blow it to smithereens. Wade the waters of what-if and never say, excuse me. Rip the blinders off. Astonish with the alabaster amazement of curiously curated clues that curtsy for the occasion. And when you write a poem, remember this. Blank piece of paper, agony, then ecstasy. Life of a poet. Thank you.
Thank you. That was amazing. I love that. That was fantastic.
Thank you.
It's great to start our meeting with a little literary. Yeah. Will you come every Tuesday and set the tone?
I'm sorry?
I said, will you come every Tuesday and set the tone? That was awesome.
Would you write a poem for the centennial?
Of course. I'd be thrilled. In fact, my first book of poetry probably didn't get the notice it deserved because of the pandemic. It came out in 2020, but it's titled The Tao of Hibiscus. And Vero Beach being the hibiscus city, I think you'll hear more from it in the days to come. Thanks again.
Wonderful. Thank you. Oh, Commissioner.
Thank you so much for the gift that you just gave us. And with that said, I'm looking a little beyond you, and I see our very first poet laureate, Mr. Sean Sexton. He's here to pass the torch. He's going to be tending to the cattle a little more often and a little less writing, and we hope that we can receive many of the gifts that you will provide, as Sean has for so many years as well.
I'm happy to. Thank you so much.
Fantastic. Come on up. Get your proclamation.
Thank you. Good morning. There he is. Okay. Morning.
Thank you so much. We look forward to your tenure.
Thank you.
All right. Where am I? Track of where I am here. All right. The next presentation is a proclamation designating September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. This will be presented by Commissioner Ehrman to Tracy Hernandez, Director of Development for Suncoast Mental Health Center. Welcome, Commissioner Ehrman.
Thank you. Good morning, and thanks for being here. It's sad that we have to follow something as great as what we just did with our poet laureate, but as we all know, suicides like cancer. We all know somebody that has, or a family member, somebody that has committed suicide. And it's a sad plague on our community, but we've got good people and great organization like yours and other people that are working real hard to curb this. I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we'll move on from there. Proclamation designating September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas, September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which directs the community's attention to the public health epidemic which destroys lives, whole families, and sometimes entire communities. And whereas, suicide rates on the Treasure Coast in Okeechobee County and in Okeechobee County continue to be an issue, according to the Medical Examiner's Office, with 136 suicide deaths in 2023. And whereas, in 2022, there were more than two times as many suicides, 49,476 in the United States, as there were homicides of 21,196. And for every death by suicide, there were 32 attempts. And whereas, according to the Florida Health Charts, in 2022, the age-adjusted rate per 100,000 population of suicide deaths in Indian River County was 18.4 compared to Florida at 14.1. And whereas, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for ages 10 to 34 and the fourth-leading cause for ages 35 to 54, and is a major contribution to premature mortality. And whereas, suicide is preventable, and by offering the public education, data, support, and services, we, as a community, have taken a step toward preventing another suicide by our residents. And whereas, we are honored to be a part of the healing process, raising awareness for and support of those affected by suicide by offering supporting services which address mental health illness and drug and alcohol addiction. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that September 2024 be designated as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the county of Indian River, Florida, and the Board asks all residents to learn how they may help, because suicide prevention is everyone's business. Adopted this 10th day of September 2024 and signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you all. It's good to see you again, although I wish it were for a happier topic. It's my privilege and pleasure to represent Suncoast Mental Health Center and accept this proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I'm here today because conversations matter and can help save lives. Suicide continues to rank among the leading causes of death in the U.S., especially among teens and young adults, with statistics showing that nine out of 10 people who die by suicide suffer from a diagnosed or undiagnosed mental health disorder. We must work together to ensure access and funding for services while advocating for prevention through conversation and education. On average, there are 132 suicides a day in this country, which means someone takes their own life every 11 minutes. And for each death by suicide, there are about 32 attempts. At Suncoast Mental Health Center, we are addressing this mental health crisis by bringing our services and support directly to the communities we serve. We offer client focus, community-based, and family-centered mental health care in homes, schools, four Suncoast office locations, and by telehealth. Our dedicated team of professionals is passionate about helping others and working together to provide a holistic approach to treatment for more than 1,300 clients every month, including hundreds of students at more than 80 schools in our four-county service area. Here in Indian River County, Suncoast currently serves close to 300 clients and provides onsite, in-person, mental health services at 20 local schools. Another way we are serving Indian River County is through a new program that supports and empowers families. Wellness Without Walls Family Support Services is our part of a collaboration with the Mental Health Association's Parent and Child Center. This program is designed to create a supportive environment that helps families build resilience, achieve stability, and thrive in the community. So for the thousands of clients we serve every year, and for those who still need our help, sincere thanks to all of you for joining us in this community effort to raise public awareness and promote mental wellness through fearless conversation. Suicide is preventable, and each of us has a role to play to save lives and create healthy, resilient individuals and families. Together, we can change the narrative on suicide so that no one feels alone in their struggles. And just a quick note in keeping with our commitment to educate the local community, we are hosting our annual Suicide Symposium on September 20th in Stewart. This is a free community event for the Treasure Coast area, and we welcome you to join us. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. Our next presentation is recognition of two Indian River County Chamber of Commerce Awards for Outstanding Tourism Marketing and the Henry Award for its redesigned consumer website. And Commissioner Flesher, this is kind of your wheelhouse. I don't know if you want to introduce our award winners.
Well, we have before us, we have somebody that's no stranger to, one of the folks in the center of the room, Mr. Ben Ehrman, who has brought us to the forefront and enhanced our tourism element beyond expectation.
Thank you.
It's well-funded, but money doesn't do it. It's the people behind the funding that get the job done. And we were so honored to have this recognition. Ben?
Yes. Well, thank you very much. I'm Ben Ehrman, Vice President of Tourism and Marketing with Visit Indian River County underneath the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce, and Krista Hoyt, our Tourism Communications Manager. So we are your tourism team for all of Indian River County, Vero Beach, Sebastian, and Felsmere. Most recently, two weeks ago, and I spoke about this at the TDC meeting in August, and we didn't know what the outcome was going to be, but two weeks ago, we attended the annual Florida Governor's Conference on Tourism, which is presented by Visit Florida, the entire state's tourism office. And at that, there's this opening ceremony where they award counties and different marketing projects with awards. We were notified that we were to receive one, but they don't tell you whether it's first place, second place, or third place. but they don't tell you whether it's first place, second place, or third place. And they don't tell you what it's for, but they have seen your stuff over the year and then are given those awards. So much to our surprise, we were given first place in the website category for our newly redesigned website. So if you haven't checked it out, go to visitindianrivercounty.com and check that out. It's got a lot of great enhancements to it, a lot of features that it needed to have to bring it up to date. And we're continuing to update it all the time, so that was recognized. And then, that wasn't all, because you can't just have one. We were very surprised at the end of the ceremony. They then do best-of-shows for four different budget categories, because every county, every tourism division has a different budget amount for their marketing. We were given best-of-show in our budget category for Indian River County, which is the $500,000 to $2 million budget category. So overall, best-of-show for county tourism marketing, so.
Awesome.
And this is the first time that Indian River County has received first place and the first time that Indian River County has received a best-of-show since it's been with the chamber since 1986. So this is, took my existence for us to get it. To get us, to get us there, and it happened. And it's the first of many, and we're honored and we love what we do. We love this area. We love everybody that we work with in the tourism industry. And we were honored to receive an award for our website that we worked with an incredible marketing agency, Madden Media, on to develop. But then to receive overall best marketing in our budget category for the county was a real honor. So I wanted to share that with you all and let you know that we're doing a great job. Two awards, so.
And how amazing that you won both awards in the same year. That is, that is awesome.
We both have finished our full year just over the, in April. So in our first year to receive two, and not just one, but then a best-of-show, was pretty, was awesome.
Well, you have set the bar very high in your first year, so.
That's what I do. That's what I do.
We look forward to seeing how you build on that base, but you guys do a fantastic job of marketing the county and bringing our tourism here and working with the community partners. So kudos to y'all. It was well-deserved. Commissioner Fleischer?
No, and I really appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you, Ben, for bringing the hardware home and being honored. I unfortunately could not be at the conference. I had to be at the Air Force Academy on the same day. But I knew that you were going to get that top prize. And I am just so excited because people need to realize that our tourism happens because of people like you, all of our participants, because we do not have a theme park, a water park, a main event. We have what we appreciate every day here in Indian River County, and you present it so well. And if anybody wants to see, I encourage them to visit the website because I think you'll be fascinated on all of the oysters in which we do have in this county. And we should appreciate them and visit them, and thank you. Ben, you want to mention the website again?
Visit IndianRiverCounty.com. And make sure to follow us as well on all of our social medias, Facebook, Instagram.
And people can download the app as well?
We don't know. We don't have an app.
They just, they'll go right to Facebook?
Yes, if you have the Facebook app, yeah.
Yes.
Facebook, Instagram, or the website at VisitIndianRiverCounty.com. All right.
Thank you for the great work.
Thank you.
I'm going to throw it over to your proud papa to embarrass you a little bit.
I guess I should say something. First of all, I'm very proud of their efforts and Ben's efforts. He works very hard at his craft or anything that he does. And Krista keeps him in line and keeps him focused and stuff like that. So it's well-deserved, and it was a lot of hard work to get to that level. So I'm just telling all y'all out here, don't call me when you have, see a traffic problem in Indian River County. Call the chamber because they're doing such a good job bringing tourists here.
It's true. I get excited when I see like a Canadian license plate now, right? But like, living here, yeah.
We're very, we're very proud of you and very proud of the chamber and all the hard work that everybody does there with this. But this is an exceptional, especially when you look at a budget, the big award budget from $500,000 to $2 million. So that's with some big players in the state of Florida, and we were, we rose to the top. So very proud of y'all, very proud of you, very proud of you. Krista, thanks for everything.
Congratulations.
And bring up the. You can feel it.
It's heavy.
It's like a real award. It's not, it's not a fragile award.
Solid.
Don't leave it with Commissioner Fleischer.
That looks great on the desk.
Right? Congratulations. Great job. All right, and for our last presentation, Vero Beach All-Stars 10-U 2024 Florida State Champions. I'm going to throw it over to Commissioner Lore.
Madam Chair, it is an honor and a privilege. We have Coach Partey with us, Coach Williams with us. So friends in the audience and fellow commissioners understand that it's been over 26 years since the state of Florida has won an under-10 championship for the Little League. And these boys, obviously 10 and under, from right here in Indian River County, Vero Beach, are the state champions for 2024 for under-10 of the AAU League. And it's very, very exciting. Many of us watched the Little League World Series over the past couple of weeks. But to have our state champions right here from Vero Beach is truly amazing. And it's an honor, coaches, to have you here. And Coach, if you'd like to identify the teammates that you have, I know some of them had some mandatory state tests today. But friends, these are all under 10, so here we go.
This is Cohen Schofield, Strider Schofield. You can't tell them apart, so I had to just ask them. Wyatt Partey and Brody Vordermeier on the end.
Fantastic. And the other players, we will be getting a certificate to them. So Coach Williams, do you want to tell us a little bit about the journey?
Yes, sir. So we started down Port St. Lucie for the District 17. We went 8-1 there to advance to sectionals, which was up in Melbourne. We went 2-0 and advanced to the states, which was Bonita Springs. Again, I think we went 6-1 there, ended up beating Niceville in the championship. From there, we got invited to Wilson, North Carolina for the Southeast Regional Championship. We came in second, made it all the way to the championship game, lost to South Carolina 2-1 in the final. So it was a great accomplishment. Like you said, it's the first time since, I think, '97 since Vero Beach has won a state championship, and that's for any age group for Little League. So hopefully, we're building a good foundation, and hopefully in two years, this group can be like Lake Mary. We'll see.
There you go. Well, congratulations, and good job, young fellows. Come on up.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Good job, guys.
I can tell them apart. Congratulations, buddy. See you next year. You'll be older. Are they going to be in a different bracket next year?
11? Okay, that's all right.
Open them up, guys.
All right. There are no minutes. There's just a few informational items, and with that, we'll move to consent. Commissioners, anybody need to pull anything from consent?
Madam Chair, pull item 8J Juliette and item 8S Sierra.
S.
8W.
8W, okay, I was going to pull that. Perfect.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could pull 8N November?
8N, okay.
And 8Q Quebec.
Q, okay. And then Commissioner Moss, do you have anything?
I would like to pull 8H and 8U.
All right, anybody from the public wish to pull anything from consent? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, we will need a motion to move.
Madam Chair, move to approve.
All right, motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Moss. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I pulled 8H. We'll just go in order, which is consideration of the Indian River County SHIP Program 2024 Annual Report. And I just wanted to give the ladies an opportunity to go over all the good work SHIP has done this year and just highlight, you know, the amount of people that we've been able to help and the money we've been able to put back into the community. Welcome, Sippee.
Thank you. So we did get an extension for our annual report, and the report that we're submitting is as for expenditures as at June 30th. So to date, on the report, we had expended, we had expended a total of $1 million and five for a total of 41 households. And then by December, we're supposed to have expended the entire amount, and we will have at least 48 households as of right now for the 21, 22 funds. And then for 22, 23, we need to have encumbered the total amount by December 30th because we did get an extension. And that total for 22, 23 is $1.581,211.85. We will have, as of right now, we have a balance of $275,000, but we are confident that we will be expending, we will be encumbering the total amount by the deadline. The team has been working extremely hard, and it hasn't been easy. Because of the economy as it is, it's kind of hard to get jobs done in time. But we are working hard on getting that encumbered and submitting the report.
Fantastic. I just wanted the commissioners to know how much money that SHIP has been able to utilize to help our residents and how many residents we have actually helped. I think sometimes when we think about the amount of dollars that we have in SHIP compared to other counties, it seems small, but we are able to stretch those dollars through different programs and leveraging different things and to be able to help 48 people. And last year, and then this year, I know we're well on our way to meeting or exceeding that goal as well. So thank you, guys, for your hard work. I did, I did not have an issue with the item. I just wanted to take the opportunity to highlight for the public and the commissioners, the work that you guys have been doing. So thank you. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman for a second. We'll have the second by Commissioner Moss. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. All right, we'll move on to 8J Children's Services Advisory Program Fiscal Year 2425 Agency Grant Contract. I believe that was Commissioner Fleischer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate that. And I see the update, and I have no challenge with the update whatsoever. I just wanted to take this opportunity to remind that all applications, I did get an inquiry about it, that all applications. Megan?
Hi, how are you, commissioners?
That the executive salaries, executive salaries will be identified for 501(c)(3), that was done at a previous meeting here. And I wanted to ensure that that is, I just wanted to remind that that would be included, not necessarily in this grant application, but they will be identified in all applications as all 501(c)(3).
Yeah, they'll be identified in the contracts that the agencies submit. And then after, or the, I'm sorry, the RFPs, the agencies submit. And then this contract after CSAC approves, this is a contract that goes. But that's after the applications are submitted, yes.
The Office of Management Budget also wanted clarification, and I did get some calls of inquiry regarding it. So I just wanted to pull it to remind at this time. Thank you very much.
And just to let you know, we will be bringing the application to the board to approve once it's finalized.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Madam Chair, motion approved.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by myself, or by Commissioner Lore, I'm sorry. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we will move on to 8N, Approval of County Stop-Loss Policy Transition to Highmark Fiscal Year 2425. I believe this is Commissioner Lore.
Madam Chair, this is something that is not often talked about, but I did want to bring it up briefly. In essence, this is reassurance for our existing health policies and any catastrophic events that may come up. I'm proud to say that the last two years, we've seen a slight reduction. In fact, if the county administrator would like to share the additional update where the vendor came in about 12% greater, and actually, we were able to settle or negotiate down to a different vendor. Furthermore, the administrator can mention how our health clinic, our county-run health clinic, will enable us to keep these rates from going up in the future.
Yeah, over the past couple of years, I think one of the things that's important and we discussed is, obviously, in 19 and 20, it's not really reflected in this one, but I did look at the previous reports when I saw the fact that we, for the last three years, we have paid out $3.4 million in premiums, but we've had no stop-loss claims. And you're like, wow, 3.4. But we have in 19 and 20, we had one claim that was $1.2 million. And there was some significant claims below that as well. I think, so that's the reason why we have insurance, but it certainly does merit us watching it. And as we continue to work, I mean, the idea of this insurance is to kind of help to protect us from the unexpected or the catastrophic event that may happen to one of our employees and resulting in a high claim. So it's like homeowner's insurance and car insurance. It's there when you need it, and this protects us. I mean, I do think we'll monitor it over the next, you know, year or two and look at our deductible limits to see if there's a potential that we could maybe increase those for the purposes of yielding a lower premium. The current carrier did come in initially at a 12% increase. And locked in, working with Suzanne, they went back and they said, "We've had zero claims over the last three years." And then they came back in at this, you know, they came in at 12, and then they came back at zero. But the previous, the prior stop-loss provider did come in, Highmark, at a 12% decrease in our premium, arguably yielding about $147,000 of savings in this upcoming year.
And, Mr. Administrator, do you see anything with the health clinic that could continue to reduce this?
Yeah, I mean, maybe not directly, but I think indirectly. You know, one of the purposes of the health clinic besides being able to respond to those acute illnesses that might show up, you know, the flu, respiratory infection, stuff like that. It's the, it's the chronic disease management that may help. Being able to identify and treat somebody that might be prediabetic. Being able to help somebody with hypertension. Being able to help somebody with their weight management loss. And some of those other disease, you know, other things that really chronically plague it one. Sorry about that. So, so I think the more we can disease and manage, manage their healthcare with them, working with them, it also helps manages our healthcare costs.
Great, thank you. Madam Chair, that'll make a motion approved.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lore with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lore with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to eight Q, Rejection of RFP 2024054 for Gifford Aquatic Center Slide Replacement. I believe, Commissioner Fleischer was it?
That was mine.
Oh, that was yours, okay, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, briefly, I just want to thank the Parks and Recreation, we have some, in the future, we have some reconditioning and rebuilding of the Gifford Aquatic Park, but I want to thank the staff. We had an out-of-town vendor come in at 1.6 million dollars to do some work that we thought was around 300, and quickly and swiftly, our employees shut that down and rejected that bit, so thank you for saving us money.
Absolutely. Would you like a quick update on that? Beth Powell, Parks, Recreation and Conservation Director, thank you, Commissioner, we appreciate those kind words. So, some of you may not know, but the staff applied for a FERDAP grant two and a half years ago. We had public meetings, we discussed the grant, unfortunately, the grant was not awarded. So, as soon as we found out that that grant had not been awarded, we moved right into the RFP for proposals. Because of the cost of the slide, there are some purchasing hurdles that we have to cross. We recognized that the slide, early in the season, had been not approved by the Health Department because of the condition, and that was a combination of deferred maintenance issues as well as waiting for the grant to be approved because that was a $200,000 grant that we were hoping to leverage to work on the playground as well, so that we were combining the two projects. But as soon as we found out that we did not receive that grant, we moved right into the RFP process in order to get competitive bid options on the table. Unfortunately, the contractor is a general contractor, I don't think that they do slides a lot, so I think that contributed to the cost being excessively high. At our recent conference in Orlando for FRPA, we met with multiple slide vendors. We talked to them about what the purchasing options would be for us, we also found out what other nearby slides we could go take a look at, and I think staff has to date about three different quotes right now, and we'll be working with the purchasing department to find out how to move that through the process, seeing how we have already gone through an RFP. There wasn't really an explanation as to why these vendors did not submit through the RFP process, but we know everyone is really busy, and sometimes they're just looking for the easiest, quickest job that they can do. Not to mean that there's not quality involved with that, it's just that the RFP process is a little lengthy, and the response is different than just submitting a quote. So, we are getting quotes right now, and we would expect to have this project done by the beginning of the fiscal year, or, excuse me, the beginning of the calendar year.
Great, well, thank you for rejecting it, and again, saving us dollars. With that, Madam Chair, I move approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lore with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to award of bid 2024047 for Gifford Elevated Storage Tank Modification Rehabilitation, and I forgot who pulled this, was that Commissioner Fleischer?
Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate that. Pull this, this has been a long process, it's been a hard fight to ensure that the iconic Gifford Water Tower was, remained intact after we had letted it, resurfaced it, and got it ready, and it looked great, and yes, there was some damage detected. It was also during time where we were looking at, or staff was looking at, an updated version to provide additional water source, water supply for the community at day-to-day or at time of need. The tank holds 400,000 gallons of water, which is quite a bit for your water cooler.
Yep.
And we held back in talking about it, and with the community, we made some attention that that tank should be maintained. It was well-agreed, discussed, and at that time, it was proposed that it would have to be filled with perhaps sand. And again, inquired about, well, why don't we, why can't we have it as a water resource as well? We've been advised by staff that it's outdated, not ample abundant supply of water at time of need. It was a maintenance issue, there was a pump bad, but as this has changed and evolved, the, now, the process cannot be completed fully because of the antennas, so it's going to be a two-stage process, so I see there'll be additional costs. In addition, the tank will be filled with water. And I just, once again, find it ironic that we won't go just one step further to have this as an operational resource as opposed to having it filled with water for the purposes of having this iconic display that we want for the community. Why not have it operational? Would you like to share that with us?
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Howard Richards, Manager of Capital Projects for the Department of Utility Services. You're, you made a number of very good points. You're correct in that the, I'm sorry, the tank is.
Finally did it. I said, I finally made a good point.
Yes, thank you.
Been a lot of years.
Yes, the tank is at the stage where it's in need of maintenance repairs. It's a way to maintain, preserve the integrity of the tank for long-term. At the same time, there's negotiations with the, with the carriers to continue to use it as a cell tower. In addition, those carriers desire to add equipment to the tower, so because of that, structural upgrades to the tank is also required. Regarding retaining the tank as an operational asset, that is a potential. We're currently about to undertake an integrated water master plan that's going to look at the future growth and demand for service within the system. And that might require us to have additional storage capacity throughout the, throughout the county. Now, that may not necessarily require an elevated storage tank, it might be a ground storage tank, for example. However, that tank could be converted to be used as a storage center. But at the same time, it does not currently provide enough hydraulic benefit to be used as a storage facility. So, that might require additional capital to be spent on-site to upgrade that. And that's something that the Integrated Water Master Plan will be looking at.
Again, so today's action will not preclude the opportunity, if it arises, to maintain that asset as a water storage component.
That is correct. Again, there's three things taking place here with the current work that's about to take place. One is to preserve the integrity of the tank by doing the maintenance repair. One is to do the structural upgrade to accommodate the additional loads that the carriers, the carriers will be putting on the tank. And the third is to maintain a state of readiness for the current hurricane season. That's where the filling of the tank comes in.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify, because there are some questions that, you know, why we were doing that, and obviously, filling it with sand would preclude, if we're going to fill it with water, it just, I wanted to bring it out, that we would have the opportunity to perhaps use it as an asset as opposed to a, an antenna.
That's correct.
Bearing icon.
Initially, sand was thought to be more stable, long-term. However, as you said, that could potentially have some issues if the tank is, if it's determined that the tank could be placed back in operation. So, water will do just as fine to maintain the weight to weigh down the tank to withstand hurricane-force winds.
Thank you, Alan. Appreciate it. Madam Chair? Move approval?
All right, I'll be happy to second that. There's a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by myself. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we'll move on to eight U, Special Olympics Fall Classic. I just pulled this to highlight that we don't just do Special Olympics aquatic events in Indian River County. The Fall Classic is actually flag football, pickleball, softball, and powerlifting, which will be held at Dick Bird Park for the outside events, and I believe the IG Center for the inside events. I always, and I know Commissioner Fleischer is usually heavily involved in the Special Olympics, but I always appreciate that, you know, year after year, they come and utilize our recreation amenities. It's a great organization, it's a great program, it's a great event. So, I know the aquatic center, or the aquatic competition in the spring usually gets a lot of volunteers, but I'm assuming volunteers are also needed for this event, and wanted to put a shameless plug in for any volunteers. Please call Beth and volunteer, it's a lot of fun. I've had the pleasure of volunteering a couple of years, I know Commissioner Fleischer is always there, but it's just, the athletes are so excited, and they're so engaged, and there's, I mean, they are amazing, too. I can't, I can't even, I'm excited to watch powerlifting, to be honest with you, but, anyhow, Beth, you want to say anything?
Sure, I would just like to thank you for acknowledging the item. This is actually the first year for the regional events that are listed in this item. We love working with Special Olympics, they bring the State Aquatics Championship here to North County Aquatic Center, and they have the grand opening ceremonies at the IG Center. It brings a lot of families from all over the state, so it's really an opportunity for us to showcase Indian River County and all that we have to offer here. So, we're very proud of that relationship, I would like to thank our aquatics manager, Dave Smith, for his work. This is the 18th year minus COVID that we've had the Special Olympics. We do have two volunteer opportunities, so for the Aquatics Championship, September 27th and September 28th, the grand opening is on the 27th. We have some resources on our webpage and on our social media to link you to those volunteer signup sheets. And then for the regional meet that will be at Dick Bird Park, there's also a need for volunteers. So, we appreciate everyone in our local community who support the athletes and their families, and also the organization. And with this being an Olympics year, there's even more excitement, the athletes are even more ambitious, and I think inspired this year, so we would just like to invite everyone to come out for both of these events. And thank you for acknowledging the event and giving us an opportunity to share the volunteer opportunities as well.
It should bear a lot of excitement for us, for the community. Thank you for mentioning that there are volunteer opportunities. I see a few of our volunteers in the audience, maybe they want to share amongst each other, maybe we can generate more volunteers. It's a very rewarding experience to participate with the athletes, and this is our first year that we are out of the Fran Adams Pool for a short time, and we will be at the IG Center and working the varied sports, but very excited, and we will be up at the Fran Adams Pool again. Yes, in the summertime. Thank you.
All right, commissioners.
Move approval.
All right, I have a motion by, thank you, a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Ehrman. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we will move on to eight W, Agreement for Drown Zero Stations between Indian River County and the Rotary Club of Vera Beach Sunrise Foundation, Inc. Commissioner Ehrman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, this was brought before the board back in February, and we just got it approved, but I guess it got lost in the shuffle somehow, and I'll apologize for that, but we got it done. This is a great project, and it's done by the Sunrise Rotary Club, and we're just looking forward to it. So, I wanted to invite Justin LaFever here to speak again, to refresh our memory as to what it is. But I want to thank Susan and Chris in the County Attorney's Office, along with Beth and Mike Zito, to get, to get this through and get it done so quickly so we could have it for this meeting, so, with that, Justin?
Well, on behalf of Sunrise Rotary Vera Beach, Debbie and I here would just like to thank you all for approving this, and we appreciate everything that we're going to be able to do to help save the lives of Indian River County citizens and also the visitors who come here. We hope to get the drownings that are, happened here in Indian River County down to zero, there have been some recently, and we'd love to see that go to zero with this project, so we just thank you for the opportunity to serve the community.
We appreciate you guys and your partnership, and this is such a great idea, and I know it's already helped some in other areas and in ours, so, thank you, guys, we always appreciate all your hard work, and we're happy to partner with you on this.
Thank you for your patience.
And your patience, yes.
Thank you very much.
And we would also just like to extend our appreciation to Sunrise Rotary for your patience. I know you've been working very closely with Jonathan and Gustavo, and we're happy to have the agreement here before you, and look forward to, not only the opportunity to provide these stations in county parks, but the access provided will enable them to work their relationship throughout different private or other municipalities to provide the stations along the coastal areas where lifeguard stations may not even be available. So, thank you so much for taking the lead on that, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chairman, move approval.
All right, I'll be happy to second it. We have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman with a second by myself. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks again.
Thank you, and with that, commissioners, we're going to take a five-minute recess. All right, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Commissioners, if you would indulge me in moving 15B1 up, we do have some different dignitaries from the community that probably don't want to wait till the very last item on our agenda, so in an effort to, to help out scheduling, I would like to move that up, if that's okay with y'all. With that, Himanshu, ladies, come on up. 15B1, Indian River County Solid Waste Disposal District, vape pen recycling program.
Good morning, Commissioners. Himanshu Matha, Managing Director, Solid Waste Disposal District. Thank you for moving this item forward. I'm just going to go over kind of the quick highlights and then let Sue and Jill kind of take, talk about specifics. One of the growing problems that we're seeing in our efforts is the use of vape pens throughout our community, but what's happening with the vape pens is the batteries that are in there. A lot of folks are just throwing those vape pens after they're done in the trash or in the recycling. And what we've seen is a growing trend in fires that are occurring in our recycling trucks, garbage trucks, and so on and so forth, even in our recycling processing areas. So, so it's, it's a big problem. We have, we're launching, we're probably the second in the state to launch a vape pen recycling program, so we're excited about that. And we partnered with a company out of California to help us properly collect those at our convenience centers and at the landfill. And so part of the agenda item is an approval for, for funding that we do have in, in our budget currently, about $5,200 to, to, to begin the vape pen recycling program. But to tell you a little bit more about that, I'll transfer to Sue.
Thanks, Himanshu. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us this morning and for moving, moving this up, Commissioner Adams. I won't elaborate too much more because Himanshu did a phenomenal job on that, but I will say, as Jill will advance some slides. Wonderful, Kim with the most is here. This is our Indian River County Pilot Vape Pen Recycling Program. And if you look at some of these very scary statistics, yep, we can move it to the next slide. I'm not going to read these, but some of these statistics are very, very scary. I will say that almost 200 vape pens, explosions and fires which lead to about 133 acute injuries were reported in the United States between 2009 and 2016. And something else which is equally as scary is that the vape pen usage has increased by over 1,000% from 2019 and 2020, which means that this will only exasperate the situation as this problem continues to grow. So in the awareness of education and outreach, we want to make sure that we introduce this program. We are working in partnership with all of our supportive, I can't even tell you how supportive they've been, our team from Indian River County, our sheriffs, our school district, John Teske is here, and working to collect these pens, to get them out of the landfill and out of our collection vehicles. And so we'll be working closely in partnership with them to collect them. Also, the EPA and the FDEP has been very supportive of Indian River County in our efforts to do this. And then our partnership with Gayaka, who is a waste revitalization and sustainability provider, who specifically handles these hazardous materials to help us launch our new vape pen collection program. Because as we know, the lithium ion batteries are very much of a danger, but along with those lithium ion batteries are many chemicals to include nicotine and THC that need to be separated correctly in order for them to be disposed of correctly. It is proposed that Gayaka will put six receptacle, collection receptacles at our five customer convenience centers. There will also be one out at the main county landfill for collection and there will be ones at all of the retail supporters that will be collecting these as well. So that's a very good thing. They will be locked in case of theft or misuse, so this is important. And it looks like we're doing a biannual collection of these pens, so twice a year, under this pilot program, and I'm hoping that this, this program grows exponentially. As Himanshu mentioned, we are looking at a total cost of $5,200 annually for this program to be kicked off. So it is our recommendation at this time that you approve the funding to launch this collection program, but also we are recommending that the SWID Board waive any required bids for authorization of, by the purchasing manager to issue a PO for Gayaka waste revitalization for these services. That's it.
Fantastic. Commissioners, any questions? Or gentlemen, I'm sorry, did you want to add to that? I apologize.
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you? Joe Ball, Sheriff's Office, just want to say we work closely with the school district and unfortunately, you know, vapes get into the schools. That's why we're here in support of this recycling program. So we have our own mechanism already in place in the Sheriff's Office. Obviously, if we collect vapes, they end up being evidence and we dispose of them properly in that matter. Those that do not, that's why we're here, to make sure that those get to the right place and we support this project. So, thank you.
You just concur and are in support. All right. Perfect. All right, Commissioners, questions, comments, and concerns?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman with a second by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioners, going back to our regularly scheduled order, we will move on to public discussion items. Our first item is a request to speak from Bill Rigby regarding our RFP policies. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Bill Rigby. I reside at 8465 59th Ave of Vero Beach, Florida. Madam Chair, I stood before, I stand before you today on an issue of great importance and I previously stated in front of this commission, I am here to ensure that the commission takes all actions aligned with the law and that fairness, transparency, and public services are maintained. I also come before you exercising my right to express my opinion and present without fear of retaliation or, without retaliation or interpret interruption, I'm sorry. Here, here I'm going to start off with the role of the RSP. Madam Chair, you stated, you previously indicated that the RFP process under discussion is sound because you was personally involved in shaping it. This suggests that you, SWID Director, Person Director, collaborated to ensure that all appropriate legal language was included to create a fair and transparent RSP or franchise agreement. However, I would like to address several key issues that are of concern. Federal and state funding requirements. The recycling collection program included in the RFP franchise agreement is subject to federal and state funding and regulations which impose a specific requirement. One of the most critical requirements promoting diversity and inclusion in contracts. One, special goals for rewarding, awarded contracts. Federal and state funding mandates that contracts include provision to promote the inclusion of business owned by minority groups and disabled veteran and this ensure a level playing field for all qualified companies. Community benefits for, for supporting minority-owned and veteran-owned businesses. When you support minority-owned business, you do more than comply with legal obligations, you actively contribute to the well-being of our community too. Number one, creating jobs. Number two, fostering economic growth. Number three, strengthening local businesses. Research and legal review. Madam Chair, I have been thinking about this issue for quite some time and have done my research. Federal fund requires, I will, this is what federal funding requires, and I would like to review the specific federal funding records that Indian River County should have on hand. I'll be looking for documentation about disabled veteran, minority-owned business program, state funding requirements. I will conclude and conduct a summary review of state funding sources to ensure compliance with state diversity and inclusion mandates. County policies. I will also examine Indian River County policy to see whether they align with federal and state goals for minority and veteran-owned business participation and procurement. All policies should be harmonious to ensure a fair process. Human, human resources or person director should readily keep these documents. If the document is unavailable, I request a written reason as why not. Recommendation, I'll close it out in a few minutes. Recommendation for RFP language and policy adjustment to ensure families and inclusivity that the RFP for this contract should contain clear language regarding one, goals for participation. The RFP should explicitly state the goals for participation by minority-owned and veteran-owned business. For example, the county should aim to achieve a specific percentage of participation by these businesses to maximize their involvement in the contract. Minority and reporting. The county must implement a system to track the participation of minority-owned and veteran-owned business in doing so. You can ensure progress toward meeting diversity goals. Moreover, regular reporting to funding agencies should be required to demonstrate, the county's agencies should be required to demonstrate the county commitment to fulfill these objectives. Conclusion and call to action. Madam Chair, I specifically urge you and this commission to cooperate in these provisions into the RFP process. Doing so well ensure not only compliance with legal requirements, but also promote economic opportunities for diverse businesses, thus contributing to the growth and prosperity of our community. Your role is to serve the people and that is include fostering an inclusive and transparent process in all county businesses, county business activities, particularly those significant, significant and public contracts. Here's my last statement, and I'm going to say this, and I hope I'm saying it in goodwill. I mean, and what I'm saying is I mean not to harm anyone, but I want you to think about what I'm about to say. I have been coming for this commission, the past and present commission for over 20-some years. twenty-some years. And, and I'm looking at this, and I'm saying is that, we have five commissioners here, and with the five commissioners here, you have all kind of contracts that's been awarded, but we are not benefiting from those contracts. Like you have AC guys, contractors that's licensed, you have tree service guys that's licensed and contracted, but we're not benefiting from none of this. But I'm looking at this like this, if there was five black commissioners, if there was, and if there was a black purchasing department, person director, if there was a black SWID director, you mean to tell me, I'm talking, you, this commissioner, you mean to tell me for over twenty-some years that we have been coming before you past and present, that you're going to tell me, that you're going to sit back and, and do nothing? But when we come before you, you say, we always come before you complaining. I don't come to you, come to you before complaining, because I don't want you to judge me by my color. I want you to judge me by, by if you feel or you accept the job that I do. In closing, I'm going to say this, we need work. These contracts that's been out for over years, we do not benefit from them. We're just asking for some consideration in the policies that you have prescribed. And every time that we go to purchasing, they use the words, "We encourage participation." That's what you say. But I look at this, and I'm going to take my seat. The CDD, you encouraged it. Waste management, you encouraged them for over sixty years or more. And the way that the RFP is designed now, and you can check, take, take, go back and look at the record if you want to, waste management within Sebastian and waste management within Indian River County will always have this contract. And the reason they will always have this contract is the way that you have designed certain agreements with waste management from nineteen ninety-two. If you don't believe me, check the records. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rigby. All right. With that, we'll move on to a request to speak from Joe Idlet III regarding the Gifford Welcome.
Yes, good morning. To our commissioners, my name is Joe Idlet. I'm the president of the Progressive Civil League of Gifford, and I live at forty-five seventy, Fifty-seventh Avenue, within the county. And like, like you said, we're here to talk about the Gifford Neighborhood Plan. First of all, I would like to acknowledge that people from my community are here to support us today, and I want to thank them for coming. They want to hear what's going on, they can look at you and you can look at them, but they're here in support of myself, Tony, and Freddie. And, and the second thing, as I talk, speak here, I'm going to acknowledge that we've been on this journey for years. So, and, and when that time come, I will, I will acknowledge where it began. The Gifford community, the Gifford community collaborated with the county on a neighborhood plan, which was approved by a previous Board of County Commissioners on September the seventeenth, two thousand and two. During twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, staff worked with the Progressive Civil League of Gifford and the community to prepare an updated version known as the Gifford Neighborhood Plan two thousand and fourteen. And I want to say right here, this is where myself, Freddie, and Tony started on this journey, trying to make sure, or do the best we can to make sure these projects go forward. So we've been on this journey for fourteen, ten years. Through considerable interaction with the residents of Gifford, the county has prepared this neighborhood plan, which presents a strategy for utilizing the opportunities and for overcoming the, the constraints that exist in Gifford. Even though you may not have been a commissioner in two thousand and two, we believe the plan was developed in good faith, and we also believe it is still a binding contract document. Some key issues that the twenty fourteen plan addressed have been slow in coming, and we feel there has been little or no effort on the county's part to address them. However, there were some successes of the plan. For example, Phase One on Forty-Fifth Street Beautification in twenty sixteen. The past, though, has no relevance on today, and the disrespect the Gifford community is being shown. Some are, some, some neglected projects, nine, and all these projects are numbered on the Gifford Neighborhood Plan. Nine point three, improve, improve and beautify Forty-Fifth Street with partial cultivating and landscape, which is Phase Two. It was scheduled for twenty eighteen, as we spoke with the powers that be, it was moved to, to twenty nineteen, and then it was moved again to twenty twenty-one, and the last time it was moved, it was moved to twenty twenty-three. And it started in, supposed to have been done in twenty eighteen. We waited patiently for years, and ultimately, effecting the nine point three was moved on, moved to our FDOT. We didn't jump for joy because we, we've been waiting a long time already, and we all know that DOT does, FDOT does a good job, but FDOT is busy, and whatever the project is, it's going to be years down the line before they even get to it, if they get to it. So we've already waited for years, now it's, it's in FDOT hands, but we still have to wait a lot more years. And in the meantime, although they did, FDOT with the help of Commissioner Fletcher, we, we were moved up to number, number one on the priority list. What does that mean? After they finish with Oslo Road, Gifford should be the next project in line. So we do have that, but like I said, years down the road. And also on that project with FDOT is Forty-Fifth Street, on Forty-Fifth Street, there are sidewalks that are supposed to be from Forty-Fifth Street to Forty-Ninth Street. So on Forty-third Avenue from Forty-Fifth Street to Forty-Ninth Street, they're supposed to be putting in sidewalks. That's a part of that FDOT project. I was looking at the capital improvement comprehension plan, and over the years, there had been an accumulation of fourteen million, four hundred thousand dollars toward that project. And I guess now we're wondering about that, about the location of those monies, as well as there was a figure on there for right-of-way as well. And my question is, ultimately is, since it was turned over to FDOT, was it turned over to them out of necessity? My next project, seven point three, repair and connect sidewalks on Forty-Fifth Street from Fifty-Eighth Avenue to US One. There was also on, on the plan, a project to put a left turn lane at Forty-Fifth Street and US One. And that's, that's on there as well. This project was scheduled for twenty twenty-one. And like, like I said, we started this journey in fourteen, talking to people, so we started talking, and so we up to twenty twenty-one on this project, and we're in twenty-four. And the capital improvements statement says that the Forty-Fifth Street left, left turn lane at US One is, is already fully funded. That's what the capital improvement, improvement states. All right? And I do want to say that the county did complete from Forty-third to US One. So part of, part of the project was done, we're still waiting on the other part. Seven point four, provide sidewalks along Forty-first and Forty-ninth Street, and that's scheduled for this year, twenty twenty-four. And we're also looking, and Forty-first Street is also a part of that project as well. Eight point six, pave Thirty-second Avenue north of Forty-third Street and Thirty-fifth Avenue north of Forty-Fifth Street. This was scheduled in twenty sixteen. It was moved to twenty twenty, and it's now, on, on the latest metrics, it says twenty twenty-four. The, the capital improvement states again, this project, the funds are included in the roads resurfacing account. And my last project that I want to talk about quickly is thirteen point six, design and develop a plan for the old land, Gifford landfill site. This was scheduled for twenty eighteen, and it was moved to twenty twenty, and has yet to occur. But we are only talking about, it was proved for the frontage, they were supposed to improve the front of the old Gifford landfill site, and we are still waiting on that. Some of the excuses over the years that we have heard, it's too expensive. Every project that I see that the county does is expensive. So when you come to Gifford, why you got to throw it in our face, it's too expensive. The next thing, next one is, we was told, if you help us to pass the optional sales tax, and, and which we did help to pass the optional sales tax, the projects will go forward, has yet to go forward. The next excuse, just a few examples, right-of-way issues. Right-of-way issues is always thrown in our face, but right-of-way issue is a part of what the county does. And I'm quite sure there are no right-of-way issues that you have already dealt with in the past as well as today. And the last example I'm using for excuses is, we, we are told on different occasion, we spent X amount of dollars in Gifford in, in, on, on whatever years, or we met with you on whatever topics. But for, but that doesn't have anything to do with today, that's the past. We in a different time, different year. So what happened, occurred in the past is not relevant today. Yearly, we, the community, we contribute in all ways. We pay property taxes, we pay optional sales tax, we buy gas, we buy large ticket items, et cetera, which justifies our feelings and our concerns. We finally met with the new county administrator on two occasions about the neighborhood plan. We feel that he allowed us to go through the motions within our discussions until he decided it was time for us to leave his office. He concluded by stating that he and his assistant will investigate, which was not needed because the county always do its due diligence. So they had already done what was needed prior to writing the neighborhood plan, so there was no need to investigate. We patiently waited for his response, which we never did receive. So I finally wrote him a letter through email, and I CC'd that letter to each commissioner. And I did receive one acknowledgement from Commissioner Fletcher's assistant. They did acknowledge that they did receive that letter. And I'm going to read the letter that I wrote to the, to the county administrator. It states, I can't pronounce that last name, so I'm going to call him John, just John. The Progressive Civil League members participated in two meetings with you and your assistant, Nancy Bunt, on April the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, concerning the Gifford Neighborhood Plan. We expressed our concerns with the county's neglect of starting and completing projects in the plan agreed upon by a previous Board of County Commissioners. You ended the comedian, you ended the meetings by saying you and Nancy need to investigate. We do not understand a need to investigate, like I said earlier, because the county had already did its due diligence, and there was no need for an investigation. And I, so, we were expecting to hear back from him, but, but I never did, he never did respond to me. We would like to know the results of your investigation at your earliest convenience. We look forward to hearing back from you as the execution of this plan is important to the safety and welfare of all citizens of Indian River County. Please help us to move this, help us to move these projects forward. And I, and I signed thanks in your cooperation, for your cooperation. In, in closing out for me, no, no matter the topic, and today the topic is the Gifford Neighborhood Plan. For successes to occur, you must care. And the Gifford community, over the years, that word has not been exhibited. When we spoke with the former public, I'm, when we spoke with the former public, the work director, Rich Burka, about projects on the plan, it looks like he is the only one to tell us the truth, when he said, it is not going to happen.
Welcome, Mr. Wolfork. Welcome.
Good morning, Freddie Wolfork, forty-five ninety, Fifty-seventh Avenue, Beere Beach, Florida. Mr. Idlet has covered it twice, thirdly, everything that I wanted to say, but I want to look at things from a diplomatic perspective. When I began this journey with civic activities and public involvement, my beard was black. That says a lot, doesn't it? My beard was black. That's how many years that we've been trying to get attention to some of the things that are happening. I remember what my grandma said one time, she said, "Son, you have to understand that out of sight is out of mind." And we feel that way in Gifford, that things sometime we are out of sight so long until you forget about us, and they're treated as stepchildren. There's some things I know that you can bring up that were against your success. We had COVID, we understand, back in two nineteen, two thousand and twenty, had some other issues happen. But as I looked this morning, as I sat there at the different presentations coming back, our problem exists because we lost our loving feeling between one another. And how we lost that is that there are new people on board now, new county commissioners, new other officers, and we haven't sat down at the table as we used to sit down at the table. So we need to get back to the old way. I, I see Indian River County using an ABC approach. A means when you see a project, you attain, B is, you make sure you do due diligence and your strategic planning. Then the B being, you have a budget that you use and stick to that budget and make sure it goes forth to accomplish what you set out to do. And finally, the C, which we have not seen in a while, that's mean completions. Haven't seen those completions that should happen somewhere down the road, as Mr. Idlet is saying, twenty-seven years, we should have some completions, other than hearing that, well, we did work in Gifford, and we did improvements over millions of dollars. Yeah, but that was a supervising elections office, that's not considered Gifford improvements. So what I'm saying today, and I'll be very brief today, is- So what I'm saying today, and I'm I'll be very brief today, is that we just want fairness. We just want individuals to understand that we want to be a partner with Indian River County as we always been. We're there for you. When you need workshop areas to come to Gifford, we pull together the community. Right today, send all these individuals who are here to support the Gifford concerns, but most of all, the Indian River County concerns. We actually don't forget about us when we have budget hearings. Don't forget about it when we have projects coming forth, because it does a lot of hurt, a lot of hurt when we see projects that are nowhere on the books now come and pass the ones that have Gifford been on the books for years. So keep us in mind and we'll keep working together. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will, Freddie.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners Anthony Tony Brown, Indian River County, N double A C P, forty one fifty nine fifty seven court. I'm the joke in the deck. Many of you know me, I come straight, I I bring it to you raw. We uh in this moment, in recent, as was alluded to, we met with the county administrator. We were placated, we was uh uh disrespected, we was dismissed. We were straight out. It was insulting. Going for some history, in two thousand and two, this started. Many of you had even thought about be on sitting where you're sitting. It went to twenty thirteen, we had a a progressive civic league meeting. It was very hot. A lot of individuals were upset. We wanted to sue you, we wanted to do everything in the world because we were tired, we were frustrated that here we are, but you're not caring about us. A friend of ours eased out of the meeting the next day they came down to the county office and they went into planning. And they said, where's the Gifford neighborhood plan? They were told, it's on the shelf. That individual said, what? He said, it's on the shelf. He spun around in his desk and say, I said, it's on the shelf. That individual say, mm mm, that ain't happening. His response was, why should we spend money when them people don't know what they want? I'm gonna go back to that word, them people. Taxpayers, them people, as Freddie alluded to, all the other things that we do. But we were disrespected. We were minimized. Many of you don't understand that feeling of being minimized. I'm a Vietnam vet, I served my country. I've been fighting for Indian River County since I was twelve years old. I love Gifford, I love Indian River County, but I refuse to be placated and disrespected, not on my watch. Many of you know, I'm a straight shooter when I, uh, three of you especially know me well. Mr. Irman, you know of me. Commissioner Moss, you getting to know me. I don't play games and I don't waste your time. We are here because we're upset. We did the back room meetings, we did the side meetings, but this time, uh uh. We want the public to know that the disrespect and the frustration that we feel in the Gifford community. All you new people don't know it, going back to that meeting. That individual left the meeting, say, Tony, Freddie and Joe, I need to talk to you. This is what they said. The three of you can never have a disagreement in open public in Indian River County again because they are watching you. We made a promise that you can no longer be divisive among us. You could not divide us. You couldn't go to Freddie behind Tony's back, you couldn't go to Tony behind Joe's back. You couldn't do none of that stuff because we were on one accord. And ladies and gentlemen, that one accord was Gifford, Florida, and what was best for Gifford, Florida. And we moved forward. And we had some people in place. Commissioner Fletcher and I, we had some rough times until we realized, put our egos out the way and let's talk about Gifford. Commissioner Lord, we kind of melted together from day one when he was the sheriff. And I thank the world of Commissioner Adams because I worked with him on. So there were some relationships. Freddie says without relationships, rules don't work, they become rebellion. We're at the point of rebelling because we've seen none of our stuff has made a thing to these people that don't know us, don't know our journey, don't know our history. So in twenty fourteen, you reapproved the Gifford neighborhood plan. And we started to move forward. God blessed us with a Stan Bowden. Somebody who was honest, open with us. He didn't make promises. We sat down and we had conversations. We had conversations relative to forward movement. When you started to give it Forty Fifth Street and it ran into Martin Luther King Day, you weren't there, but Stan was. Stan could tell you what they had to do. Freddie, Joe and Tony Brown had to be the targets because our community said, you did it on purpose. You all and those who sat where you sit, you didn't catch hell, we did. Tony Brown, Freddie Wolfork and Joe Island the third. We had to intercede on your behalf to calm a community down that was furious and felt disrespected because they felt you purposely did that. But we had to tell them, no, there was some underground drainage stuff that you had not anticipated and you had to order the piping. You couldn't tell them and they was giving Joe, Tony and Freddie, pure, oh, y'all, y'all, y'all bought and paid for huh? You don't understand our plight. As Joe, Joe know this neighborhood plan like the back of his hand. Then we got to a point we had, Andy Sobcheck. Andy never lied to us. Andy was straight with us. Andy called it as he saw it. And then I hear rumors and propaganda about Andy this, don't defame Andy to me, please don't. Because each and every one of us wake up every morning with something wrong with us. Got a misstep we made in life. But some of you got some serious dirt, including Tony Brown, in your baggage. So let's get it real, that man, Stan Bowden, Andy Sobcheck was awesome when he came to the Gifford neighborhood plan and building a relationship with this county commission and the residents of Gifford. And all of a sudden, the new powers come to be. Don't know nothing about Tony Brown, don't know nothing about Freddie Wolfork, don't know nothing about Joe Island the third. But I have a plan and I'm gonna bring where I'm coming from and insert it into this community and I don't know anybody. I don't know none of their pain or suffering. But I got it clinically, analytically in my mind, this is what I'm gonna do. Irregardless to how much pain it causes an impoverished, under-resourced, disrespected community of color called Gifford, Florida. I rode at the fifty thousand foot level where you are, a lot of my people haven't. You're strategic and analytical and you oftentimes forget the caring aspect. But we give a grace because we thought we had somebody in the moment that could stand for us. As the president of the Progressive Civic League said, we sat a meeting with the administrator. Ladies and gentlemen, those of you who know me, I'll disengage. Sending that room, I disengaged because Freddie will kick me under the table or give me a look because he guards there working on me. And I love Gifford. And I don't do disrespect easy. When you tell me that the Thirty Second Avenue plan, which was years ago, Commissioner Fletcher, you may remember, that was a federal grant that said everywhere that you tore up a road and you put a manhole, you wouldn't pave it. But we were told in that meeting, oh, it's gonna cost fifteen thousand dollars for each resident on impact fees. Are you serious? One, I go back, one of the most impoverished, under-resourced communities of color. Fifteen thousand dollars for something that a federal grant had already paid you to do? But Freddie Wolfork had asked for our meeting. First of all, we was gave thirty. We was real upset, I told you, I disengage. Because see, my mouth oftentimes will get me in trouble because God has the right on me sometimes. So we left there hours, but Joe, that's Mr. President. See, lead, follow or get out of the way. And me and Freddie good at following in his leadership and we do that to each other. He said, let's give it another try. We waited, 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 waited and waited. Freddie said, I'll make it. We made an appointment once again for one hour. We went into the meeting. I was upset because I can see it, somebody that I had respect for was late getting to the meeting and somebody who should have been an administrator made some disparaging comments about their lateness, but they were coming from another meeting. So when they got there, we moved forward. But in that meeting, that individual spoke truth to to life. He uh went along with some assessments that Joe, Freddie and I had made. We kind of looked at each other and said, ooh, he's in trouble. He's in trouble. But also in that meeting, that thirty minute mark, we were told the meeting is over. And the disrespect was compounded by, oh, I gotta meet with the chief judge. Do I look like next meet? Do I look like dirt? Freddie went to the desk and say, weren't we afforded an hour? Yes. But there's no relationship, there's no respect. I'm gonna move out of this Gifford, two point seven, within two point seven miles of the ocean. Commissioners, look along Florida's east coast. There's only two black communities that fit that criteria, Gifford, Florida and Rivera Beach. We beat front property, we've watched it. We've watched gentrification. Now we're looking at it. See, I'm a little conspiracy theories. Is this lack of commitment to the Gifford neighborhood plan is be quiet and by the time it comes, they'll be gentrified and we won't have to do it? We'll let all these businesses coming in do it? Remember the concrete plant was gonna do the culverts and all of that on the west end of Forty Fifth Street? I have a photographic memory now. We weren't gonna, county wasn't gonna have to pay for it. Look around us now, ladies and gentlemen, we have four hundred fifty thousand, five hundred thousand dollar homes around us. I ask the question, what are you as commissioners gonna do to protect the historical integrity of a community such as Gifford? Right now, from the powers that we've met with, you don't want to do nothing. You're gonna let us slide away. Because gentrification now is because we're not gonna be able to pay the taxes. We don't have any gi- give back, we don't have any thing to do except watch the bulldozer run over us. And when we don't have a county administrator and a staff that is respective of us. See, commissioners, you sit up here, but there's a multitude up under you that don't necessarily do what you think they're doing. Joe, Mr. President alluded to it. Spurka was the only man was honest with us. He said, it ain't happening. Thank you and please realize, look a little closer because some things you don't know, but I'm leaving you with, I refuse. See, I'm gonna take the driver's seat in moving forward as the president of the N double A C P because this appears to be discrimination because you're not living up to what some of you signed off to do. And I have no recourse but to use impoverished, under-resourced community of color as a reason for what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Fletcher?
Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, you know, I appreciate every word that was spoken. Joe, so true, accurate with one exception. I'll say that. The the comment about the projects, yes. Comment about the finance, no, finance goes back to capital projects. So the money didn't disappear, it just got put back in the bank. But the challenge is the right of way, but even a bigger challenge. I think uh Tony Brown had alluded to it, he didn't allude to it, he said it direct uh as he always does. And Freddie, you're right, I'm looking, I'm looking at Stan Bowling, Andy Sobcheck. Thinking in two thousand and fourteen, when this was all engineered and designed and revisited, we were committed and we had Phil Matson, Rich was here. Did did I mention anybody that's still here? No. That's the problem. That is the problem. Institutional knowledge and the willingness to stand forward with what we determined, what this, well, I I was the only one here in in fourteen. But uh just after that, every time that we visited it, and I think Freddie, what was it, twenty twenty one? When we talked about um not getting that beautification done and you wanted to give us a poor grade, deserving. And yes, Rich was right, he he said, ain't gonna happen. And I was working hard with F D O T to get that accomplished and thank you because we did get that there and then that we are the next on the hopper. Uh, we we ran it through. But Freddie, when 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 we looked at in that discussion, we had individuals that were following through and none of that institutional knowledge is here. It got vaporized. The organization got blown up. Whether people retired or they suddenly left. And now we have a whole new crew. And it's not not oriented to the commitment that we established. And it's very frustrating. And I will agree with you and we're gonna have to change that today, today. Because I've walked with you, we traveled, we talked and I would talk to each one of those individuals. And somehow, there's not too many people to talk to in the organization about the plan. So I appreciate your a- account, Tony, because that's that's about it. We are focused in on academics, we're focused in on consultation and we're not focused in on continuance of action. We need to be dedicated to that Gifford neighborhood plan that was well established, well discussed, well vetted and funded. I will say that on the right of way issue, it was, that's where Rich came in and said, it ain't gonna happen because when it was originally viewed at, it was not identified at the cost factor involved with getting the right of way, uh all that right of way. We traditionally or have never purchased right of way for uh sidewalks. But we do so for getting COVID in. So that was where the dilemma was. So it could have been a little swifter and and I know that F D O T is gonna do a fine job because when they're committed, the heavy equipment comes in and they work through the night to get the job done. But they have individuals that are committed. Unfortunately, I apologize, all of the people that were committed to this aren't here anymore. They may be in the room today, but they're no longer with our organization. And that is where the failure is. The failure is in the people who care. The failure is in the people who care, the people who communicated, and the people who were committed. And now we have different folks looking at it saying, what's this about a plan? That's wrong. That will be changed. I promise you. I turn it over to the county administrator.
Oh, okay. Did you have something you wanted to say? All right, welcome.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairwoman Adams, Commissioners, staff. Uh, my name is Dana King. I live at 1746 41st Avenue. I am a newcomer to Vero Beach. I've been here two years. This is my first time speaking before your body. Thank you. And I would ask your indulgence and the community's indulgence that I speak on behalf of the Gifford Neighborhood Plan. All of us who have spoken this morning have a little bit or a lot of gray hair. But, um, I want to share an African greeting. Kesi Irin Ngira. It's a Swahili greeting that is spoken by the Maasai warriors. And it means, and how are the children? It's a greeting that shows how valued the children are and reflects the well-being of an entire society. In America, we hold a very bright light up to our children proclaiming them to be our future. But here in Indian River County, how are the children doing? While there are many wonderful activities and access to nature available, yes. But I'm talking about their foundational well-being. The school district is not even and never has been in compliance with the 67 D-Seg order, which started in the courts in 64, which is 60 years ago. Children who look like me and many others in this room are still denied academic access and success. On a pass fail, it's failure. While it is not your issue to solve, it is your problem as community leaders. Specifically, though, in your wheelhouse, housing, gentrification, and redevelopment. The 22-year-old Gifford Neighborhood Plan is so far a non-starter, even though it claims a high percentage of completion. Its 14 original objectives, housing rehab, housing demolition, housing ownership, sidewalks, streetscapes, improvements for drainage and street maintenance, with a final objective of employment. How is that going? Does the Gifford community look like any other community here in Vero? There are many scholarly studies that show that neighborhoods in which children grow shape their earnings, college attendance rates, marriage patterns, and even fertility. This information was taken directly from the Quarterly Journal of Economics, Volume 133. That's how this opportunity for the Gifford Neighborhood Plan affects our children. Neighborhoods significantly determine our future. Wealthy housing developments are encircling Gifford. Place matters. American housing is more segregated today than a generation ago. Decades after the Honorable California State Legislator Byron Rumford wrote the Fair Housing Act, which was then rolled into the Civil Rights Act. There's still segregation, redlining, issues around housing. Gifford is still separate and unequal. And the Neighborhood Plan, if updated and completed, could help close the gap on this glaring disparity here in Vero. So I will, uh, close by asking again, Casey Irin Ngira, and how are the children? Thank you.
Commissioners? Commissioners and to the public, what? I believe that while the Gifford Neighborhood Plan is the illustration of the concerns of the community, what I'm hearing is the bigger concern of the community is their identity. And having their identity protected as a community and respected and supported. There's a lot of concern, and we've all heard this the past several months. Gentrification, encroachment, lack of ability to protect and support and honor your history as a community. I can understand that coming, while not the same. Felsmere and our long-term residents have some of the same concerns as growth is starting to happen out that way. Protecting your community and having a community that has roots is what keeps your community growing and what makes you vibrant. And when you feel that those things are being impacted or not understood or not listened to or cared about, frustration is not even the word to describe it. It's more than that. It's, it hits at your heart and who you are and how you define yourselves. So I appreciate you guys coming and sharing those thoughts. I think it's something that everybody needs to hear. Not just the commissioners and not just staff, but the entirety of the county as well. Because we have so many diverse neighborhoods and communities within our county. Some of them are incorporated, some of them are not incorporated. But each one of them has their own flavor and color and their own history that needs to be protected and respected. So what I would like to do, um, I know staff has been working on some possible new ideas to address some of the concerns with the Neighborhood Plan. Uh, maybe, um, other things that could or could not be added and kind of getting us to an update of where we are, stumbling blocks and ways we can work together to move it forward faster. So I don't think we're going to be able to resolve this today. But what I would like to do is ask staff to bring back at one of the October meetings, an update and thoughts and ideas to address the concerns that we've heard here today. And I would ask that that happen in October, so we're not putting it off. And there is a date certain where everybody knows and we can work with the Progressive Civic League to make sure everybody that's in attendance today is also able to be in attendance hopefully in October, so we can continue the community conversation when we have all that information that we can have that back and forth. And we'll put it on, I'll be, I'll be happy to, if it's needed, unless it needs to come, unless it's okay to come in our departmental matter, put it on as an agenda item where we can have a robust discussion and make, um, some motions and whatever might need to happen to move it forward. Okay? Does that sound good? Is that agreeable? Yes, Commissioner Moss?
Um, I'd, I'd be happy to work on it. I spent a lot of time in Gifford. I was there on Sunday. It was the 70th anniversary of Pastor Etha Mae Brown of the Church of God Tavernacle. And we spent hours, and it was, it was incredibly inspiring. So I'm very happy to work on this. I mean, honestly, for a plan that is more than 20 years old, I think it's shocking that so little has been done. Um, I can understand the anger that so little has been done. But I don't think it should be directed toward people who have been here only a year when it's, the plan has been around more than 20 years. I mean, in all fairness. So I would ask that everyone, both sides, enter into this partnership, and I would like it to be that, with goodwill and in good faith. I don't, like I said, I don't know what happened more than 20 years ago. But obviously, there was not a lot of progress made. And while I've been here, um, no one, none of the commissioners brought anything forward to, uh, to our agenda on the Gifford Neighborhood Plan. So it would be my pleasure to work with you on this. And thank you for being here today.
Madam Chair?
Okay, thank, yes, Commissioner Mclusker.
No more inaccurate statement could have been made. There was a lot of improvement, enhancement with the Gifford Neighborhood Plan over those 20 years, specifically from 14 to, uh, 20. I think, uh, it, it is very inaccurate, cause all action has stopped, has stopped on the Gifford Neighborhood Plan since the departure of Rich Spurka. And then it only catalyzed when we started to lose all of the other institutional knowledge. Because there was a lack of interest to be committed to what we were committed to. That's the issue. So that was very inaccurate, by the way. Because there was much done early on.
Well, that's, that's, that's fine. We'll include a timeline in October then. Would that be, that'd be the best way?
We've lost a few years here, and we will gain them back.
Okay. I think this is a good illustration of why we need to have a conversation in October, not only to educate ourselves who may not have been here and involved, but to hear the feedback that we need to hear about where the community wants to go. So again, we're not going to resolve this issue today. But I do commit that we will have that conversation in October. Staff will be prepared to talk about what we have done, what is still outstanding, why some of those things are outstanding. I think what is outstanding is some of the heavier lift items, the, the infrastructure, the sidewalk. There, those types of things, which I agree, money shouldn't be the be-all and-all while it's not happening. But I think it's part of why, part of what we need to understand, because moving it forward is gonna take policy and budget decisions. And at the end of the day, we are the five people that make the decisions on policy and budget. So if it's something that we want to move forward, then it's on us to put it in the budget. And that's just the way it is. So with that, yes, Mr. Brown?
I would be remiss if I didn't address something. Uh, Commissioner Moss said, we've had relationships. I don't think you heard me. Disrespected, dismissed, placated. Please hear me. You're asking us to enter into something where we don't feel that a relationship is possible. Hear me. Dismissive, placated, and insulted. That was our last two meetings, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. With that, Commissioners, we'll have that scheduled in October. Um, and I think we are due for a five-minute recess. Thank you. I apologize.
The Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, at 9:05 a.m. or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard to consider adopting the following: An assessment resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, authorizing and adopting a non-ad valorem special assessment within the county limits for the purpose of benefiting assessed properties through enhanced Medicaid payments for local services, finding and determining that certain real property is specially benefited by the assessment, collecting the assessment against the real property, establishing a public hearing to consider imposition of the proposed assessment and the method of its collections, authorizing and directing the publication of notices in connection therewith, providing for creation of other authorizations and delegations of authority as necessary, and providing an effective date. And this is for the public notice for September 24th, 2024, to consider a resolution adopting a non-ad valorem special assessment rule on hospitals for the Local Provider Participation Fund.
Thank you. And I believe we have another public notice item?
Yes, we do, Commissioner. Thank you. The second public notice item is notice of scheduled public hearing to discuss and approve a resolution adopting new utility rates and fees. On July 2nd, 2024, the Board of County Commissioners scheduled a public hearing to discuss and approve a resolution adopting new utility rates and fees. Effective January 1st, 2025, the scheduled public hearing provides Indian River County Department of Utilities customers an opportunity to comment on the new utility rates and fees. The public hearing will be held in the County Commission chambers during the regularly scheduled meeting on September 24th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. The Board of County Commissioners held a rate study workshop on August 22nd, 2024, and it's reading that this notice be issued and that there's no action at this time necessary by the Board. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to county administrators' matters. First up is 11A, Second Amendment to the Collective Bargaining Agreement between the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2201 IAFF, and the Indian River County Emergency Services District, providing for general wage increase.
And Chair members of the Board, this item is, this is the third year of an existing contract. And the only article that was open for negotiation was the wage article. And following a meeting with the Board, we met with IAFF on two occasions. And we have come to an agreement for a 10% wage increase. The total cost of the wage increase, including benefits, is $3.3 million. Those funds are budgeted and available in the Emergency Services District budget. And so staff's recommendation, and I will say that the union has ratified that agreement. And so staff recommends approval of a 10% wage increase for employees represented by the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2201, effective the first full pay period in October 2024, and request the Board authorize the Chair to sign the Second Amendment to the October 1st, 2022 Collective Bargain Agreement, Article 34, salaries providing for the general wage increase. Return it to the Board for discussion.
Commissioners, is there any questions, comments, or concerns? No?
You already have one?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear. Who?
I made motion and Darren.
Okay. There is a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Lur. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chief, did you want to say anything?
I just want to thank the Commission for approving this. This will help us immensely with our retention and our attracting other candidates from around the Treasure Coast and beyond. I would like to thank the union for their support of this and for ratifying it and for the county administrator for suggesting it. It was a team effort and good things will be done with this for the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristen Chiana?
Good morning, everybody. I just wanted to come up and thank each and every one of you on behalf of the membership of Indian River Firefighters for our general wage increase. You are definitely showing us your commitment to us as a department in our future. So we just want to thank all of you for, for doing that.
Thank you. All right. Thank you guys so much. We look forward to continuing to work together.
Yes.
All right.
And hopefully not call.
Yes. The idea is not to call them in a, in a good way. All right. The next item is departmental matters, Human Resources. 12C1, Approval of Implementation of Compensation and Classification Study for Non-Union and Exempt Employees, effective October 4th, 2024. Suzanne, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Suzanne Boyle, Human Resources Director. I do have Ally Crumpler on the call as well, if there are any questions that come up. Would you like us to go through a similar presentation? Or are there any questions that you have? I think each of you are pretty versed with the compensation study. I can give a brief overview if you'd like.
I think a brief overview would be fine. We've all seen it multiple times. And unless something magical has changed, we should be able to just get a overview.
It has not, but this, this study began, the project kicked off back in October of 2023. So it has been almost an entire budget year. The study involved a lot of data that we provided to Evergreen Solutions, employee data, pay plan data, our contracts, our, our personnel policies. They did an analysis. They did a outreach to our employees. We had survey participation. Over 60-some percent of our employees participated. We had a large number of our employees that completed job assessment questionnaires, asking for specific information about their duties and responsibilities of their position. And all that information was amassed by Evergreen and analyzed. And then they went out to market a study and they marketed our pay plan with other pay plans and gave us an analysis of where we stood in relation to these 19 other peer groups. Interestingly enough, our cost of living in Indian River County, out of these 19, for Indian River County, were the third highest. So all of the market data was adjusted for cost of living so that we could get numbers that would be relevant to the people that live and work here, as well as people who might be wanting to move to this area and for us to have competitive pay plans. So with that, they provided a final recommended study. We are, Evergreen is recommending that we move to three pay plans. A general pay plan for our non-union employees that are paid hourly, our Teamsters or Labor Pay Plan, which is for our blue collar employees who are represented by the Teamsters Union, and our exempt pay plan, which is our salaried professional pay plan. And with that, they have implemented implementation of pay plans with a, and I'm, I'm very pleased to say, that our starting rate of pay for our full-time employees, the hourly rate will be at a minimum of $15.75 an hour and go up from there to a variety of different pay grades that are in each of those plans, providing for a 60% market competitiveness for us to recruit and retain qualified personnel. In looking at the implementation of this, we have over 700 employees, those that aren't represented by the fire union that you just, just adopted that general wage increase, but all of the other employees. Out of that group, the Teamsters group, we're still under negotiations with them. We have presented the plan to them. We have an oral agreement for that, but we do need to meet with them again to solidify and get agreement and then bring that back to the Board. So what's before you today is implementation for the non-union employees, which are your general employees and your exempt employees, as well as a recommendation for a general wage increase for our contract employees that are also a part of our, our plan. The recommendation for the pay plan is for our hourly employees, we are recommending that the implementation occur and that employees receive either a $1.75 hourly increase or a 6% increase, whichever's greater, or get pulled into the pay plan based on their time and position and their pay grade penetration, which is a little complicated, but we've explained that previously, how that calculation works. What that means is that our employees will receive anywhere from a 6% to a 15% increase in their adjustment to pull them into these new competitive pay ranges. And we really believe that's going to help us with recruitment and retention. For our exempt employees, kind of a similar thing, but the minimum amount would be a 6%, capped at 7.5%, allowing us again to recruit and retain and pull people into these new pay plans. And then for our department heads, we're recommending a minimum of a 4% increase up to a 6% increase as determined by the county administrator. And then for our contract employees, we are recommending a 4% general wage increase under the terms of their agreement. And that's the implementation plan that's before you today.
Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns? The only thing that I would ask is I know as we go through this and, and it starts rolling out and being implemented, there are going to be anomalies. I know we anticipated that. All along, we've anticipated that there's going to be somebody or some, you know, a group that may be not classified correctly or a band or job that needs to be adjusted. And we did set aside dollars specific to that.
Correct.
If everybody wants to move forward with implementing this and we have a motion, I would just ask that it is, it allows for when those anomalies to arise for the department head, the assistant and deputy administrator, HR, and John, to get together and work those out. So we're not hamstringing it, but we can move it along and then address those as they arise.
That sounds like a great motion. And since you can't make a motion, why, why not make it now?
Is that, that's your motion? All right. We have a.
It affords flexibility and gives good direction and guidance.
Thank you. All right. There is a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Ehrman. Any further discussion from the Commissioners? Anybody from the public? Sing none? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next item is Planning and Development Services, Indian River Mall redevelopment items. Thank you so much. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. For the record, Ryan Sweetie, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. We have been approached by a recent purchaser of three of the five parcels. And actually, let me just hop right in. So for those of you, most of you are probably familiar with the mall. But you may not actually realize that the mall itself is five separate fee parcels. What I refer to as the common area, which is the, you know, the food court, a lot of the shopping way, the mall, the movie theater is the common area parcel. And then each of the four department stores are separate parcels. The former Macy's, the former Sears, the existing JCPenney, and the Dillard's. DTS Properties, which is a real estate developer, has recently purchased over the past year three of the five parcels and has approached us to begin discussions about sort of comprehensive redevelopment of the overall mall property. Phase one is really to, to demo portions of the existing common area of the mall, a portion of the theater, but to keep, to keep a portion of the theater and to redevelop generally with things that are already in keeping with that type of area. Big. Big bucks, retail, some smaller tenant space, retail. But in phases two and three, they are proposing a hotel, like a resort hotel, some residential, and a potentially some institutional uses like a private school or perhaps even a medical clinic type item. So, there are two items that came about at the formal pre-application conference that we had July 8th of this year, just a month and a half ago. And the two major issues are that the mall itself, and I'll go back, not to jump around. The mall itself and the surrounding out parcels has an RC, Regional Commercial Future Land Use designation. It's completely unique to just the mall. It's the only, the only properties in the entire county that has the RC designation. The RC designation was created specifically for basically a regional shopping mall and is limited to basically those big box, regional type tenants and users. No additional uses are allowed, including residential, institutional, or lodging. So, the first item or issue that was identified that would require a formal comp plan tax amendment would be to amend the RC future land use designation to allow these additional uses. Now, over the past twenty or so years, malls have brought on different and new types of uses to generate, I don't want to say traffic, but to kind of synergy amongst the existing sort of old school regional mall. So, the applicant would like to request to move forward with a formal comprehensive plan tax amendment to allow multifamily residential up to eight units per acre, which is consistent with what we allow right now in our CI land use, which is our other general commercial industrial use. Hotels and motels are lodging and institutional uses, including private schools or medical facilities. So, that would be item number one. And I will, I'm not asking for a sort of a formal motion, but I am asking for consensus, and I want to take each item separately, just to differentiate. The second item is a request specifically for the hotel to have an increase in maximum building height. When we first discussed, we talked about something considerably taller that I think staff right out of the gates said, "That's not going to fly here." But through additional negotiations or discussions, we've kind of landed at roughly forty-five feet of interior building height, which would accommodate four stories. And then we do allow, even in our current code with the thirty-five foot requirement, fifteen additional feet for elevator shafts and other appurtenances on top of the roof, so to speak. Screening devices. So, we're talking about essentially, they're requesting a ten-foot increase in height specific to the mall area. So, I'll give it, it would just be narrowly focused on that area. And it would only be a ten-foot increase. And that would require not a comp plan change, but it would require an LDR amendment. Two separate items, but they are requesting that, you know, we get consensus on both items. So, with that, staff's recommendation is that you consider the two items, the two changes. One is a comp plan amendment for the RC land use, so the allowable uses within those, that land use designation. And the second is a separate LDR amendment to create a very specific height exclusion zone for the mall area. And the details will come out in the various amendment processes. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Moss.
So, forty-five feet, is that what they're requesting? Because here it says they're amenable to it, but is that actually what they're requesting?
That is what we are seeking consensus on right now. It's forty-five feet.
Forty-five feet, okay. And let me see, on the, what would come back to us, or will it come back to us? I guess is what I'm asking, those changes.
Sure. So, two separate processes that would follow different timelines. The comprehensive plan tax amendment follow, is a lengthier process because it requires public hearings by both the PNZ and the board, but also a state transmittal. And that's just the uses, the residential, institutional, and lodging. The comp, or the height tax amendment is only an LDR tax amendment, so that's just PNZ board, and that does not require a state review component. But we would probably try to run the two as parallel as we could. We wouldn't want to go with one without the other. And it would, it would come back to you in a detail with a staff report. And again, we would build in, we would like to build in compatibility measures, additional setbacks. So, we're not having that forty-five feet right on the edge of the perimeter.
And it's limited to this area. This is a, this is a special zoning area.
Correct. Very, very specific, very unique to just this area. We are not talking about revisiting the height, the typical thirty-five foot height requirement across the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Flesher and then Commissioner.
It sounds like they're pretty aggressive on their desires. You know, we're known as the sunrise county, not a high-rise county. And there have been exceptions. We have the distribution center. We have a hospital. And we have a location on the beach side as well. It sounds to me as height creep. That's just from my standpoint. We have had, since, since the mall has been where it's at right now, which is now it's not there. But there have been some developments, like the Aspire and other housing components on State Road 60 that have complied with the height requirements and have done so fashionably. There's a waiting list for some of these locations. So, you build it and they're coming. So, I believe that, and they conform to the height requirements that exist. I believe that they should conform with the height requirements that exist. That's just me speaking now. I don't know if we need to go through that process. We've said no to others. And now, because it's the mall and a re-energizing of that property, which granted, they, it is a high tax rate area. What is like a million dollars a year that they pay in taxes. You know, we appreciate that. I think they could do so the same way, conforming to the height requirements that we have now. Quite frankly, we couldn't build the CBS location now or authorize it now because they just don't make them that low anymore. So, and if we're looking at other opportunities, maybe perhaps out west of town where things are developing, but all of the other hotels have done so well with our requirements now. I don't, I don't see a reason to change that at this time. It's, it is a lengthy process too. We have to file. It's got to go up. It's got to come back. We have to vote on it again. So, consensus now, just as one, I don't agree with raising the height requirement.
I just wanted to be clear. I am seeking consensus on two separate items. The uses, which is to allow the residential hotel and institutional at the existing height would be one, would be item one. And then the increased height would be item two.
The uses don't exist for that specific area.
Correct.
However, it's not zoned for it. But the uses have existed and are rather compatible on State Road 60. And we also have had a mall that has turned into a larger portion of a church over the years because of the economic environment. And it's done fashionably well. So, there's plenty of space and I agree with that. But the height, I don't agree with.
Well, I think the church is building a new church and will be moving. But just for clarification, Ryan, we're gonna, I want to take these two separately.
Yes, please.
Okay. So, the first item that you were asking us for consensus on, please summarize that.
Yes, here, if we pull back up the. We gotta hit, there we go. Oh, sorry, here. All right. So, item one is to, is a comprehensive plan amendment, text amendment to allow additional uses within the RC land use.
Okay. So, Commissioners, the conversation right now, and we can get into the other conversation, but for right now, put that back up, Kim.
I think it's the broadcast.
Thank you, is to amend the RC Regional Commercial Future Land Use Designation and the county's comprehensive plan to allow multifamily residential up to eight units per acre, hotels and motels, and institutional uses as additional permitted uses within the regional commercial land use for this specific property. Would we be amenable to having that conversation? This is not going to lock us in to a decision, but would we be willing to entertain that conversation to change the county's comprehensive plan? I think before we go down this longer process road, Ryan is trying to kind of get reasonable understanding of if it's even worth it or not so we don't waste everybody's time and money.
Yes, precisely.
So, on that issue, are you guys, we'll get into the height in a second, but where does everybody stand on item one?
Madam Chair, is this, Ryan, how many RCs do we have in the county? Only one?
It's just this map. So, it's the mall, the five parcels of the mall, and then some of the larger tenant spaces, like the pet store, the furniture store. It's just the pink, if you look in front of you on the.
Right. So, this is, this is different than, let's say, the outlet mall.
Correct.
Okay. What bearing, if any, do you see? And I know it's early in the urban service boundary study that we're doing now.
I don't see any bearing on that for this.
Right. And Madam Chair, I don't have a problem with this section of it because of the overall condition of the mall area, the chatter that we've all heard about, what's going to happen at the mall and what type of economic stimulus can we have. One other question, Ryan, when you mentioned the institution or the school, does the school have any, any leverage at all in this, in this RC equation? In other words, it's allowed, but does that add any extra benefit to move this along?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lur, I don't believe so. I mean, it's just a potential tenant that they could have to have more than likely a private school.
Okay. In other words, they don't have a tenant that they've been.
Correct, that they've been soliciting.
I think that they're trying to figure out where they could position the property and then figure out from a phasing aspect what they could, could kind of do with it, but trying to put the property in the best position to redevelop.
Kind of a pre-app to the pre-app.
Correct.
They're asking for some additional uses, but without asking for a complete change to CI.
Yeah.
Right. I was on the initial phone call from the representative of the company and passed it on to Ryan and Andy at the time with regards to this. And these were some of the questions that they did ask us at the beginning about, you know, where we're going to go, what we're going to do, what about height limits, about having, you know, apartments or live-in space there and even a hotel. And things were discussed at that time. And then we had the same conversation. Get with staff, work this out, go over it, look it over, you know, come back with, for more conversations. And I was involved in a couple of these, but I certainly wasn't involved back in the July conversation. They had a vision. They presented us with a rough site plan, correct? It was a really rough site plan. They presented us with that vision with regards to where they wanted to go with this, how they wanted to go to redo the entrances, how they wanted to work on the area, the front of State Road 60, what land they had or were going to purchase to make it visually enticing for people to come in. And we were all very impressed with that. And they did ask this question about, you know, the housing thing, you know, because you got to have, in this new area, you got to think outside the box a little bit. And in regards to this, they were thinking about if people live around the area that would come to the mall, it would, it would bring more and more business in there in this redesign of the mall. I think we're in a good position now by giving a consensus to staff of where to go with this in the future. Right now, with this, with item one, I think it's something we should reach a consensus on and have staff use it as further negotiating tools to what we're going to do. So, like you said, Madam Chairman, so they can figure out what their uses are and what their uses aren't. I know since I've been a commissioner, I have heard, and the mall is in my district. It shoots up, that's about the only thing across 60 that shoots up in my district past the Vero Beach city limits. And the word has been on the street with everybody, what are we going to do about the mall? The mall's got to be done. We got to have something. Indian River County deserves better. We deserve to do this. So, you know, these people have a vision, and I think we need to become partners in this with them as to how we're going to do it and how we're going to work, as long as we're following the rules and regulations. And to think outside the box in this a little bit is not, is not a lot to ask. So, I'm actually in favor of supporting item one.
All right. So, it sounds like, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, I've just got to comment on it. I am as well. This is actually, it's new for us, but in terms of the country, this is a well-established pattern of taking malls that no longer are functioning as malls and repurposing them, if you will, and creating residential space, recreational space, retail space, a combination of spaces for different purposes. And what I've read are quite a number of success stories. This was in the Wall Street Journal, and it's been for years now. So, while it might be new to us, it's not new. And I've read many success stories, so I would definitely say yes to this.
All right. So, it sounds like item one, we have consensus to move forward. All right. Pull it back up so we can see item two. Item two, now I would like everybody to talk about the, to increase the maximum building height within the RC future land use designation. Limited to only the current existing mall area. And with the specifics of the height exception area would be further defined during the formal LDR amendment process. So, basically, would we even entertain a conversation about a height increase specific to the existing mall with how that's defined and what we might be able to leverage in exchange for the height increase defined during the amendment process? Is that accurate?
Yes. With, you know, they say the devils are in the details, but the, yeah, with the specifics to come out through the formal process. But if it's a non-starter, then it's a non-starter as well.
Correct.
Ryan, the newly built condominiums to the north, on the north side of 26, how tall are those?
So, everything, the apartments further to the west, there's actually a mixture of apartments and other uses being currently built right now to the north, everything meets the thirty-five foot. And just to be clear, the building height definition is interior finished ceiling height. So, there is a little bit, there's a few feet above thirty-five that you see from the outside. But everything that's been approved or built in the last ten years or more, well, for, you know, thirty years, has been thirty-five feet minus the distribution center.
Right. And again, this would be just inclusive of this particular RC area.
Correct, which is the only area.
The only one.
So, you know, we can, and this could be part of the conversation and negotiation as we can require if they want something different, like an extra building height, that it has to be tied to affordable housing or it has to be tied to other types of things. So, you know, I think our, the question is, are we even willing to entertain it? So.
Precisely. Yes. Yeah, the specifics of it will be worked out. It's really, is it even a thumbs up or a thumb down?
One thing about height is it very rarely presents itself to be affordable housing. If affordable housing exists, in the cost of infrastructure and application, it probably would not be able to give us the opportunity to have affordable-type housing, if the word affordable housing exists.
Well, I would beg to differ. There has been conversations at AHAAC and there's been conversations at the Affordable Housing Conference that I just went to where other places are doing the same thing. If you want a height bonus or you want something of that nature, then a specific percentage of your development has to be at an affordable range, which is set by the county through the SHIP program. So, yes, I understand, I'm not saying they get it and then there's no drawbacks or there's no oversight. But what I'm saying is if it's a conversation that you guys are willing to have and the concern is you don't want to see it just riddled through the community or not tied to some kind of deliverable that we want to see, it could be tied to other public benefits. I mean, we do some things like this, not height bonuses, but other things for PUDs.
Setback reductions, lot size reductions.
Yeah, lot size reductions, setbacks, all sorts of different things. So, it's, there can be. So it's, there can be a give and a take. I don't think, I think if the height is something that they want and we're interested in entertaining it, I think it needs to be tied to something that we want. They want something, why want something in return? So I'm just saying, and if that's a conversation that we want to have, then, or if it's a no-go from the beginning, that's fine too, and Ryan will just say, nope, you're at where you're at. So.
Madam Chairman?
I mean, I'm not saying that I'm going to vote for anything, but I'm saying if they want to spend their money and roll the dice based on how this conversation is to go through that process of changing, just be aware that I'm going to want something in return.
Chairman.
This was, when we had those first few meetings that I was involved in, this was the topic that came up, and Ryan and Andy stood firm. They say, they explained, as he explained here, what are requirements are with the housing. And they understood that. They said, you know, to make it financially worth their while, they would need the four-story. But they weren't, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, they weren't committed that a hotel was the complete answer yet. That was pretty much, you know, maybe a hotel, maybe not, we don't know yet, depending on market analysis and stuff like that. I don't have any problem with this. I agree with what you say. I think maybe there could be a give and take there. But I'm not willing to end this deal with these developers because they have, and let me regress. When I first got the call and we had the first meeting, we were all apprehensive, staff was apprehensive, and I was apprehensive of how, you know, is this just somebody just feeling this out to see where we're going on the mall? Well, money talks. They started spending money. They spent 14, almost $15 million so far. That was a big plus. They continue to contact, they continue to work with us. I think we need to think outside the box here again. I think the people of Indian River County want a place to go for shopping, recreation, dining, whatever the case may be. And I think there could be a give and take here on that, but I'm not willing to risk keeping 10-foot from nixing this deal if that's what it means without us trying to negotiate something in. The people of Indian River County want this area to be redeveloped. I think we have an opportunity to, and I'm not going to haggle over 10 feet. I'm okay with the 45 limit because it's specific, this area, and it's something that needs to be done. But yet, Madam Chairman, I do agree with you. I think it's something we need to have a long conversation with about, and I'm okay with giving staff permission to work with this number.
Commissioner Moss?
Yes, given the history of the mall and its state for quite a number of years now, I think I agree most closely with Madam Chair that I'm willing to consider height, because this is a special zoning area. We're not changing anything in a large-scale territory. So that being said, in exchange for however they might want to incentivize it.
So what I'm hearing is, we're willing to have the conversation, but we're not necessarily sold and willing to do it, and that they can take that and make their decision on if they want to follow through with that.
They can proceed with caution.
Correct.
And it's not a guarantee, but it's also not, not, so I have what I need.
You have what you need? Okay, fantastic. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to utility services. Spoonbill Marsh intake pump station electric power cable replacement waiver, this is very long, a bid requirements and awards, and thank you. Now that you're here, you can take it over. Welcome.
Thank you. Howard Richards, Manager of Capital Projects, Utility Services. Spoonbill Marsh filters brine solution from Hobart Water Treatment Plant. By blending it with water from the lagoon that is pumped in from an onsite pump station, sometime around October of last year, the power cable feed in that pump station failed due to deteriorating conditions. So due to the importance of the pump station, staff immediately had to go out and rent a generator to supply temporary power, while at the same time, we commenced an urgent project to replace the cable. The permitting process to replace the cable took a lot longer than we were anticipating. So while we're going through that permitting process, staff went out and solicited bids from two contractors. One bid came in significantly higher than what was considered reasonable for the type of work to be performed. The second contractor, Paragon Electric, was a lower bid for $601,000 for an open trench construction and $425,000 for directional bore, which is what is currently permitted to be done. So in the interest of time and cost, staff is requesting to waive the bid requirements and award to Paragon for $425,378.38. Staff also requests approving an amendment to Masteller and Muller for additional permitting services, and also to authorize staff to spend up to an additional $85,076 for additional costs that may arise due to unforeseen conditions in construction. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns? All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman with a second by Commissioner Moore, I'm Lohr, I'm sorry. I do know your name, I apologize. I know. The caffeine is starting to wear off, I apologize. Is there anybody from the public? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, the next item is under my matters, and some of you may or may not know, but I've been in a leadership position with the Association of Counties for several years now. Their second VP, everybody moves up from second goes to first, and then to president-elect, and then to president. Their newly-elected second VP did not get reelected in his campaign in the primary. So there is an open second VP spot for the Association of Counties that I would like to run for, but it does require that I have the support of the commission, because in subsequent years, it might require some time away and travel. So I would like to ask for your support.
All you need is consensus, and I am so supportive.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You have my vote.
I'll be glad to, because I see her work, that group up there, and she's absolutely fabulous, she's well-respected, they listen to her, she knows all the players.
Yep.
And without a doubt, you have, if you need a motion to maybe.
Consensus is fine, but.
You got it.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
Everybody.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you so much for your support. I think the next item is going to be a little bit longer, so for everybody's sake, I'm going to take another break, just five minutes. Thanks. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order. With that, we will move on to Commissioner Lohr's matters. Commissioner Lohr?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a topic that I've been wanting to bring up for the last few months. I let our county administrator know, I believe it was on August 12th, that I would be placing this on the agenda. And not even modern days, but going back decades, a CEO of an agency, or a company, or a nonprofit, or a bank for that matter, typically has his or her board of directors briefed on their progress. In fact, many times, there's a self-appraisal, self-analysis that is provided to said board of directors or whomever. In past years, this has not been a practice in Indian River County. In fact, really, the only dialogue publicly that we have with the administrator is either his or her budget statement and/or a renewal of their contract. And our current position with Mr. Titancich is a three-year contract. I do want to say this, and that part of my discussion today will include, hopefully with support from the other commissioners, that we do have some type of updates, either quarterly or certainly greater than biannually, updates from not only our attorney, but our county administrator. I think that makes a healthy environment. Also think it helps our employees know the direction. Our county administrator and our directors and our department heads are sometimes strapped, and sometimes they don't have the opportunity to get out and about and let the employees know what the temperature of the county is. I will say this, going back several decades with respect to our county administrators, from Jim Chandler to Joe Baird to Jason Brown, one thing that the three of those had in common were they were from the budget director's standpoint. So that might not seem like a lot, but when we think, friends, about budget directors becoming county administrators, obviously with one particular background, I think that's important to note. In 2023, when we hired Mr. Titancich, I think all five of us knew that his background, albeit budget director ultimately in Cocoa, but as important, had a background not only in community development, but in other areas of running an agency, albeit not the size of this agency in Cocoa, and his role in St. Lucie County. But I will add that compared to the other previous budget director administrators, I do think that he more than likely had a greater understanding of some of the things that go down throughout the agency, particularly in community development, and more specifically in our building division. We've all had emails, we've all had phone calls of frustration. Me being the rookie on this dais, I can tell you, I do get a lot of complaints over our building division. I think some call it a department, when in fact, it's a division. I will tell you, we do have plans in the future, and I know some of our friends that are in the audience are at a point of frustration. Simply put, that is their livelihood, and when they are told, get back with us in a week, two weeks, three weeks, sometimes months, in a few instances, a few years, that affects their livelihood. And we, as a body, are tasked and commissioned to oversee not only the administrator, but the attorney. We're not tasked or charged with overseeing the building division, Parks and Recreation, and the like. Our sole responsibility is to create, set policies, and approve an annual budget. Our responsibility is not to manage the building director, the community development department, Parks and Rec. That's not our job. Our job is strictly defined, and that is what we should be tasked with. So coming forward, I, as mentioned, I brought this to the county administrator's attention a while back, and I've asked him to describe. and I've asked him to describe and explain to us some of the successes that he's had in sixteen, seventeen months, and more importantly, some of the challenges that he has had, perhaps some of the challenges with personnel issues, some of the successes that we've had, and what we can expect in the future. We've heard some things already today, but I had no anticipation of, of some of the, some of the comments. But I will say that this is a healthy discussion. It's something that is overdue, and something that has to happen. Additionally, I will say that the relationship that I have experienced with the county administrator and the county attorney, county attorney's office, have not been stellar. In fact, several months ago, I had the former county attorney and the county administrator in my office as three gentlemen, and I specifically said, "We can do better, gentlemen." We started the conversation with "we can do better," and we ended the conversation with "we can do better." Now, some would say, "Well, what's the big deal with the administrator and the attorney's relationship?" Well, friends, it is a big deal, because those are the only ones that this body controls their contract and their employment, obviously. I do know that there's areas of improvement there, whether it be personality conflicts on either side, don't know. But we do know that that's one area that needs upon improvement. Before I allow the administrator to explain some of these things, I also want to mention that in this process of when we ultimately hired Mr. Titanich, he provided a, a six-month goals and accomplishments. This was prior to being hired. And some of the things are obvious: meet with the county commissioner, meet with the assistant administrator, the county attorney, the constitutionals, and the like. But one thing that sticks out talks about meeting with businesses and representatives of the community. And I do think that's an area where we can approve. We've heard this morning about a particular community that feels as if perhaps they weren't communicated with accurately, and/or with respect. Also would like to say that meeting with community leaders and community employers, large employers, small employers, from the construction trade to the parks trade, whatever the trade is, doesn't mean that you meet with them when they are frustrated and aggravated. Meeting with them means meeting them and talking to them on a level basis. No one wants to have a meeting with somebody that's upset. That doesn't, in my book, count as one of your first six months' accomplishments of meeting with community partners. That's more of a complaint session than a meeting. I do feel with conversations that I've had with the administrator that he's well aware of these. For the public to know, each commissioner meets with the administrator every Monday. Whether we have a meeting or not, we meet and we discuss a lot of things. I will say that there are some follow-up issues that have me frustrated, as one commissioner, on some things that I would contribute to be, whether a lack of communication with staff up and down, or I should say down, in his case, and those things need to be rectified, and we need to move forward in a positive direction. I'll also say that this exercise today needs to continue, and hopefully to reiterate that this will continue. We have a brand-new attorney that starts, well, that will be here Monday, I believe, the sixteenth, and that's healthy for an organization. But for us to thrive, like any board of directors, we have to have feedback from our CEO. Absent lack from information from our CEO, we are going to find ourselves in a position where either we're continuing backpedaling, or perhaps looking for a new CEO. And that is up for discussion today. So with that, Mr. Administrator, I know you've had an opportunity to talk about some of the things that I've described, and I think myself, our employees at this wonderful agency, and the public would love to hear from you, sir.
Sir. Thank you, Commissioner Lohr. I just want to start off with, I mean, I think, early on, you know, as we discussed, and I met with each of you, I kind of got some of your goals and objectives, and what you would like to accomplish. And one of the things that we started off with is undertaking an organizational assessment, and evaluating, you know, a potential reorganization, one of the things that I mentioned during the, during my interview, and then evaluating personnel changes. We obviously did deorganization during last year, where we narrowed the focus by taking certain functions out of Public Works, taking certain functions out of, out of a plant, then Community Development Services, and we created the Natural Resource Department to provide a more focused approach on those issues within that department. We did the same with Community Services in terms of the human services, children's services, housing services, veteran services, and then libraries. So we did that. We also proposed, and you all approved, and we hired a new assistant county administrator over Development and Infrastructure Services. And the departments that report to that position are Natural Resources, Planning Development Services, Public Works, Utility Services, Utility Services. We also authorized a county administration abudsmen. That position was hired. They didn't start till, like, late. I think it was in July. So, and they are working right now. I mean, they're, they're working with helping out our businesses and communities. They've actually been working with all the departments, and kind of, if they get a question or a comment from somebody regarding a permit or a process, trying to assist those, as well as looking at some of our processes. They took over the, you know, we retained a consultant to evaluate the development review process, and they took over that responsibility to kind of land that. We've got a final draft last week with some recommendations, and we're just waiting on a final meeting with PES Consulting to then get the draft, I mean, the, the final document. And I'll provide that to each of you. The other thing, we, I mentioned the Natural Resources Director, we filled that position, and then the Public Works Director position, obviously that position opened up. There was a change there, and it took us a little bit longer than we anticipated, you know, but as I, you know, I'm just kind of, to be honest, I'm just reviewing some of the items I sent in my April 25th email, year in review. We needed the right person, you know, and recently we hired, and they started, we actually hired him about two months ago, but we, Adi Haved, who started this past week. So the driving force, I guess, you know, when I look at that, and one of, and listening to, because one of the things that I did is I also met with members of the community in terms of some of the, some individuals providing me people that were having frustration, and then I would talk to them on a privileged basis, if you will, and then get their understanding, whether they were a builder, contractor, developer, or whatever the case might be. And then I would ask them, "Well, who else should I speak with?" And we started, so I could start getting an understanding, and as I kind of got more of an understanding, that's where I felt we, we needed to go a little bit deeper, and that's why, you know, we came, talked to each of the board members, and we retained PSS, PES Consulting to help us go further, and they, and they did that. They took it a step further in terms of continuing to interview, but also reaching out and talking with staff. So the, the other components, I would say, we've, obviously we've been focused on, I know we've done some of the strategic plan. We're not completely there yet. I think there's some organizational capacity issues that we're working on, in terms of, as we, our goal teams are working on developing objectives, strategies, and then I would say, but we do have our mission, our, our values, and we have our goals that have been established, and our teams are working, and it's just taken a little longer than, because we want to get it right. Customer service is a big issue. City of Vero Beach, they've expressed it. Other people that have met with me, when before Nancy joined us, you know, I was the one taking the calls from upset, you know, customers, and then following, or getting a call from maybe one of you about a, a matter, and I would follow up with the appropriate departments and try to run that. It's kind of focused on the urgent, rather than the more important things that were for long-term health of the organization. But we did that, and now with Nancy on board, and Amber, to be quite honest, it's actually provided a little bit of, you know, a breather. But, you know, we have, you know, from the City of Vero Beach held two meetings about the, the county's building permit process. There was a topic in the joint city-county meeting, and so we challenged the department, you know, to identify potential solutions, system, look at their systems, their processes, and, and that's what we've been working on. We've also looked at it, you know, with, now that we have a public works director, we recently, I mean, in terms of, one of it, you know, people process culture, the people, I mean, the, the organization, you know, I've heard the term, it was undernourished. Sometimes I think the lean led to malnourishment. You know, we never stepped back up and increased as the, as the community was growing, and we have several single points of failure, and we are trying to address those as we identify those. But we, the county engineer, that position is, is, the offer's been made, the person has accepted. And then one position landed, Development Manager, which was over in, in Public Works, and look, you know, handled those that were doing the reviews and stormwater and stuff like that. That was abandoned by the, the former director, and we brought it back, because we thought that was important, and everything didn't have to flow up to the director in order to come back down. We needed to have some levels. This year, you know, with Building Facility and Services, that was noted in budget, the idea is, and I'll use Twenty First Amendment as an example. Jeff went, went through a painful experience, and a costly experience, in dealing with both fire and building. And, I mean, it was just really painful, because he designed his project based on one code, as he was expressed, and then goes to submit his building permit, and then there's a disagreement between the building code and the fire code. Meantime, he already designed everything, and, and so he had to go back out. I mean, he shared that story. Obviously, it made headlines, and I know with Commissioner Ehrman, myself, actually Commissioner Ross was there as well, with, and just listening to the proprietor share his story. That's how we're going to learn, by, you know, to get better. Fail, fail forward is what we're kind of trying to tell people to do. If you're going to fail, we need to fail forward. We find something, we need to kind of address it, you know, ask why we're doing something. We want to try to eliminate the redundancy, eliminate the inefficiency in our, in our processes. First, we have to be effective, then we can be efficient. So I would say, for, as it relates to customer service, I, I've shared this, the county spent, sent more than six hundred and fifty of our employees, or not sent, but they participated in online customer service training. We just, this past week, roughly three hundred employees participated in onsite, in-person facilitated customer service training, because, you know, the county's mission is serving, or dedicated to Indian River County through service excellence. So that service excellence needs to go throughout the entire organization. So we have been pushing, you know, that, reminding people and sharing with people, public service is customer service. You know, it's, it's, that's just the, at the crux of it. And I think there's a little bit of a cultural change, and I think the report that I'll provide you, you know, later today, will reveal some of those sentiments from our customers. One of the things we do, we've also been investing in our program, our leadership team and some others, by putting them through a high-performance leadership program that's highly acclaimed, recognized by NACO and ICMA. And we have a total of a, we have nine, I believe, that have graduated, and six more that are in it, and we have money, fund, budgets, funds budgeted for next year. And we're not just doing directors, we're actually doing, we've got managers, and we've got program managers in there. We've done that, and that's kind of consistent with investing in those employees. We changed the policy, you know, as it related to the designation of certain employees, so, in order to be held accountable, because as we discussed at a previous meeting, employees were afforded, back in 2010, I believe, you know, property rights in terms of, you know, Fourteenth Amendment due process protection. They were literally conferred property rights to their jobs. So we identified, we didn't do, like, the state did, and some others have done. I mean, we're, we're unique in that sense, in terms of, like, our employees not being at-will. So we identified anybody that manages a program, or manages people, and we brought them, if you recall, to the, to the board, and we reclassified or re-designated them. We provided them notice, we provided meetings for them in advance, and then we, so we've done that. And we have not implemented that at-will policy to date. So. Future actions, I think I covered some of that. So I mentioned the strategic plan. I think one of the things, and I shared this in the message, and at the State of the County, last year has been a year of planning. I mean, some of it walked into it, the brochure, I looked at that, the recruitment brochure, and it talked about the need for planning, for infrastructure, for the, the future of the community. So we invested in that. We, we have. I mean, in terms of the evaluation appraisal report, came in, expanded that scope, so we could go out and do six public meetings, and also have online. That didn't, if you recall, I brought, we brought a specific agenda item back before the board that did that, and also did the data analysis, and the population projections, and things that should have been included that were not. The urban service area study, and obviously that's, that was also mentioned in the, in the, as one of the challenges in the recruitment brochure. And so that study, I'm expecting to receive a draft of it this week. So the Parks Recreation Impact Study, that's five years since one has been done. The utility rate study, as you know, we, we discussed, I mean, it's twenty years, twenty-plus years, and the CPI rate has, for water and sewage has gone up two-ten, two-hundred-and-ten percent, and ours rates have gone up, what was it, twelve-and-a-half percent? And it's left us with a utility system that's not really, it's on the track, on the path of, there's a structural deficit, if you will, financially, in terms of, we're using reserves, and we, so you all, you have a meeting coming up to evaluate that, those rates, and as it looks at those for the next two years. We're also doing a utility integrated master plan. It looks at water, sewer, the reclaimed water. I mean, we, we're facing a deadline in 2030, and making sure that we have sufficient capacity and, and financial ability to fund, you know, as much as we can, at least from a priority standpoint, septic-to-sewer projects. We're working with City of Sebastian, an item that came out of the joint city-county meeting, on the septic-to-sewer for the CRA area in Sebastian. We've done a couple of other projects where we've received grant funding. But obviously, the septic-to-sewer twenty-third deadline is, is something that will be a big challenge for the county. No different, I would say, also, the conversation you've just had related to land use, in terms of how the county wants to grow, where it wants to grow. But regardless of how the county wants to grow, county wants to maintain its current character. Everybody gets it, understands it, but, and you've heard me say it before, you know, if a project, or, you know, is a permitted use, and it's approved, the process to get that thing approved should not be used as a growth management tool. We need to, we need to expedite, we need to do what we have to do to fix the process, we need to provide customer service, not just say, "Well, you can't do that." If we have the knowledge to share, and I've, I've experienced this with, you know, some other areas, where it's like, "Well, we don't want to share, because if we do that," then what happens is, then they come back to us, and they say, "Well, you told us to do this, county." So I said, "Well, how about we provide suggestions if they could evaluate with their engineers?" So the point is, if we have that knowledge, our, our staff does, we should be able to share that. These are, they're customers paying for a service. We shouldn't just say no and give them a review comment. We should work with them. Other things, the Stormwater Master Plan, the, the Manti Protection Plan, which was already, it was kind of part of a, a task order that was underway, Beach Preservation Plan, Economic Development Strategic Action Plan, these are all things that set us up for the future. The Vulnerability Assessment Plan, issues that we have to face as a community, making sure that we're resilient, making sure that we're prepared in the event of certain vulnerabilities that may affect us as a community. There is, there is one there. It's escaped my mind right now. So I already mentioned public engagement, everything that we've done, from the utility rate study to the USB, to the, to our year, our evaluation appraisal report of our comprehensive plan, we've incorporated, you know, oh, actually, it was the Indian River Lagoon Management Plan. If you recall, I came back to the board and said, "Our staff doesn't have the capacity to go out and do this community engagement, so let's do that." And so, and that's a plan, if you recall, that was, I think it was in the, the meeting before I got here, "Well, we, we probably, we should be able to get that done by December." And you all were shocked by that, and needless to say, you know, we got on board, and, you know, we worked with staff, and know, we worked with staff and we got that thing to you, completed, and you adopted it in September. Not just being presented in December, but you adopted it in September of '23. I think intergovernmental relations has been an item that we've worked on, not with our joint city-county meetings, but also the relationships with the city managers and talking with them and staying in touch with them and trying to understand what problems or issues they may be having, how can we address it? I think some of the things going in the, in the future, at least, you mentioned in your memo about personnel, I think we have, I've discussed with OMB about the need for a grants administrator, and we're, and we are looking at that, we, we'll look at it at mid-year. I think one of the things, having the county administrator and employee meetings, while they were attended well by some departments, not others, the face-to-face meetings that the chair instituted, where the chair, myself, and some others, the assistant or deputy are going out and meeting have been, I mean, we've met with, I think it's 14, 15 now divisions, and I'll take the road and bridge. I mean, it just, they, I mean, that was a three-hour meeting, and there's, the information we received from those face-to-face meetings have been invaluable. I mean, so at mid-year, we will be looking at. I mean, I went back and looked, you know, because they talked about their staffing levels, what's the challenges that they face, you know, when they're called to pick up and do something else rather than when they're working on a project maybe down in the south, they got to go to the north. So, there's, I went back, there's 10 vacancies there. We, you know, want to get those filled, but also maybe at mid-year, maybe we need to look at that because that's a division, that's a division that is struggling, that has a lot of responsibilities within our county. So, that's something that's come up since the budget, so that's why I say we would look at. I spoke to Adi about this after our meeting about looking at it. Let's try with the compensation plan being implemented. We should have a market-based rates and be able to attract better candidates. We've increased our benefits, if you recall, you know, besides the health center open, we provide better benefits in terms of the eye and vision, and long-term disability, the compensation plan, being able to implement it as we are, you know, in one's phase, in one, at one time, is huge. Other communities have to do it over years. Maybe they have to phase it or kind of address maybe labor, then address the non-exempt, and then address exempt. We're doing it at one time, I think that will help us with the recruiting. Just because engineers is definitely a position that we, we need more engineers that will help us. I think the employee engagement, you know, need to continue that. I was glad to see that more than 54% of our employees participated in our survey to them regarding the strategic plan. You all had the interviews, and then we went back on that. We, for the job assessment training as an analyst, related to the compensation study, 63% of our employees have participated in that. 93% of our supervisors and managers actually reviewed those to make sure they were right. But I think we need to continue, you know, what we did, you know, you're not going to get a change in culture for going to do a customer-centric environment by one time, having onsite, or online customer service training and also having an onsite training. Let's just look at IT. Know before? That's a continual training that we have for cybersecurity, so we will need to continue to make opportunities for continuous training because it's not about what the employees are doing wrong, it's about maybe how our staff can do things better, you know, maybe handle a situation. And so, I think that's it, that's what I would say. But I mean, I do, and one of the other issues, and it was brought up, was previously, the MGO permitting was an issue. I know the county contracted with that back in 2019. It went live in July of '23, and there's been issues. It seems like it works, may work well for the department, the division, the building division, but not so much the customer. I got kind of cornered last night, you know, picking my daughter up for gym and gymnastics, and literally, the woman had her MGO permit app open, and she's like, "These are the inspections I have left. These are the inspections I have left. I'm waiting for this." But it doesn't work as well for the customer, I don't think, and I don't think it works well for the integrated development review process that we want to have, where we shouldn't have, perfect example, we shouldn't have an applicant submit an application and then wait for a project number to be assigned, and then they go off to the other departments. We need to have an integrated seamless process, you know, and system if necessary. I mean, I know there was some money spent on this program. The community, planning, development staff and others have attended some meetings, like to see other programs that are out there, and, you know, before we spend too much money, you know, if we have to pull the plug on it, you know, and I publicly and individually shared with you, I had some concerns about the program. I mean, it just, it was a program that was developed by an agency in southeast Louisiana for a five-county region after, in the aftermath of Katrina. Doesn't work well with CD Plus. CD Plus doesn't have mobile features, so we can't kind of expand there. So, there's, there's concerns. I think we do need to go out and look at that. I guess there's, I mean, I don't know if I need to go into all the items, but there are some things that will tell you, we are working with our staff in terms of identifying. But I, I think we've, generally speaking, yes, as we peel the onion back, sometimes there's more layer, with each layer you find a little bit more, and, but we're just trying to set the culture that it's about service excellence in all that we do, servicing one another, providing service to the others, you know, our customers, and so, that's, I mean, I think, I don't know what else. I did ask other commissioners if you had something. I was really expecting to get the input and then come back, but so, I mean, I would still like that opportunity to do that because, I mean, some others have expressed some things, and I can come back with a more detailed report. That's kind of an overview that year in review I did, but there's some other things that have come up since then. I want to make sure we capture those.
Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Madam Chair. John, you talked about these face-to-face meetings, and I understand those are very recent, the last two or three weeks. What percentage of those meetings happened after our August 12th meeting, when I told you I was putting you on the agenda?
Oh, they were already in place. We'd already had meet, we were already doing-
How many of them physically happened after August 12th?
I could pull the calendar and get you the numbers, but they were scheduled out in September, or, they were scheduled, I think we-
We had the conversation about, about having those meetings in July. And then it took, because we had to coordinate across departments, the assistant and the deputy administrator and division and department heads. And I had to, I had to clarify, my intention was to go to each of these facilities and divisions where they were. So, we had them on the calendar before August 12th, some of them, and we're still scheduling more.
But it was well-
But we have like two and three a day.
But it was well after the first six months of his employment?
Correct.
Mr. Administrator, I would like to talk a little bit about your past and how we triage things. I applaud you not only for your, for your service, but as important, being an adjunct professor at UCF. And I want to say this, sometimes when you get to an agency and you triage what's going on, you yourself are new in building a house, some of the problems that were going on in the building division specifically. But oftentimes, in life, we will read a book, and different books on, on training, professional, obviously, I didn't take too many of those, but one thing that you'll learn in ICMA management is, you get to an agency, you talk about a strategic plan, you talk about the budget process, you talk about a mission statement and values. When you got to Cocoa several years ago, one of the first things you did was revamp the strategic, strategic plan that was over 20 years of age, as well as the mission statement and a compensation study. When you got to St. Lucie County, I believe it was number three, the first thing, one of the first things you did was a strategic plan that was outdated. We agree with that. Additionally, you recaptured some grant dollars that were dormant from parks in St. Lucie County. When you came to Indian River County, in my mind, a new administrator would triage the problems of the county. However, the book says, get on to the strategic plan, you know, the consensus of the employees, as well as a compensation study and a missions and value plan. Sir, I'll say that's great when you read it in the book and you apply it in real life, but sometimes you have to triage a situation and perhaps put some of those things on the back burner, and we can get to those strategic plans. Fortunately, those are completed for the most part now. I think our employees have been informed of our, of our mission statement and our values, some of the things that we've done, I certainly applaud you for. Having said all of that, what would you have changed onboarding in the first 17 months that perhaps may not have gotten us in a position where we have community members wanting feedback? Is there anything that you would have changed otherwise?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the comment, you know, that was made about, it was getting out, I mean, while I have met with some community organizations, I haven't had, you know, the ability to meet with as many as I probably needed to. I mean, I think it taking as long as it did, almost a year to bring on the assistant, you know, director, because in the meantime, I was, the reality was, I was playing whack-a-mole and kind of focused on the urgent, you know, whether one of you or a customer called, trying to get that resolved, and then that leads you to not being able, when you're focused on that and your time consumes with that, along with certain other daily responsibilities. I mean, I came in right at the beginning of the budget, you know, I mean, so I think, I think community meetings, you know, one number one, and I think the challenge was coming in right at the beginning of the budget because that just, May to July was just budget, you know, with the reality. So, I probably didn't under, I probably didn't realize that initially, I'll say that. But what I would say is, the other thing is, in meeting with the departments, there was some apprehension, and I more so noticed it this year, retrospectively, looking back, when asked, "Well, what are your needs?" And so, like last year, we added, I think it was 35.25 or some positions, of which I think 16 were for fire, largely related to Kelly Day implementation, plus we added, we enhanced our level of service. I think that was the number. And this year, we're proposing 38, and only six are fire because now we're focusing and trying to get to some of those areas that need it. I mean, I had two departments, I mean, we set up a process to, where they, so it was, so they didn't have to do a lot of work, and budget wouldn't have to do a lot of work, like, "Tell me what your needs are." So, everybody sent a very detailed spreadsheet, what their needs were, the positions. I asked them to prioritize them, those positions, and then I had two departments pass the deadline, submit stuff for what their final ask was, and we worked with them. So, I mean, I think, you know, I think it's, it's a, and I had somebody say, "Well, you know, we never really had, in the past, you know, I don't want, you know..." In the past, it was really, you know, if we asked for one thing or another, a person or whatever, it was kind of like, the first thing was no, or how is it going to be budget-neutral or whatever? And I think, and it goes back to my comment about the lean organization, and I think that was a function of the times as it relates to, you know, post-Great Recession, the county suffered from 2007 to 2014, you know, very level, you know, the taxing values, I mean, in terms of the revenue coming in. But the organization didn't, but people were moving here, and as we've, you know, documented, more than 30,000 people have moved here since 2007, and it was only last year did we actually equal the number of employees that existed in 2007. And so, I think working with the departments and helping them understand, I've even had, you know, somebody say, I mean, because I have an open-door policy, any of our employees can come and speak to me, but I had, you know, some people, you know, to your, to your point about communications, we had, one of the meetings was like, one, one of the persons was, one of the employees was surprised when they heard that I have directors' meetings every Monday, meaning like, they didn't think I met with the directors, so, because they were, they didn't understand or hear about some of the things. So, I, I think that, some of those realizing at the organization, and I know I discussed some of the items during looking at the org chart, but once getting here, and I think maybe stepping back a little bit, but I don't, I don't, it's not a pattern, you know, I mean, I'll say this, the strategic plan in St. Lucie County was well underway. I came in with the performance metrics and all that, and the other components, and in, yes, in, I mean, I did it when I was the department head at City of Cocoa because I believed it was important, identify if you want to align, if you want to ghost, you got to find out where you're going and align your resources, you know, people, time, money to get to that direction. And so, I believe strategic plan was appropriate, and the compensation study coming right out the gate, you know, I mentioned that because it was clearly evident, you know, from talking to employees early on, that, you know, and even right now, I mean, our, in our one-on-ones, we, and the results of the survey from the compensation, we're, we need raises, we're not being competitively paid. So, I think, you know, to have waited on that would have put us back even further, you know, than we already were, in terms of recruit, being able to now have a competitive and be able to go out and recruit and retain employees.
Right, and I appreciate that. And you know, early in the preamble, I talked about, this is the first time in decades we've had a non-budget director as our county administrator. Keep in mind that he has nine departments and five divisions. John, you, you mentioned a, a single point of failure. What would you identify within our county administration as the greatest single point of failure?
I, I think the greatest single point of failure is where we have a position, and I think this is combination, going back to, because of the need to be lean and, you know, maybe try to avert layoffs, was the, that was, was taking two people or two, you know, two positions and taking one person, and now they had the responsibility of two functions. And so, we do have some positions that, you know, where we have one person. We have some where there's two. And when they, and I will say this, I mean, we provide leave, we provide sick time, we provide personal days, and the expectation, and I've shared it from day one, that, you know, I believe promoting a work-life balance for our employees, to include myself, is critical to the success of the organization. You know, it's not just about compensation, and so, when they take that time off, it creates a problem, especially if they're a reviewer, because maybe somebody else can't come in and look at that, or they have to come in and they have to start from the beginning, from afresh to kind of look at it. And I've reviewed site plans. I mean, I, I did that starting off, you know, I mean, you know, working for the city of Orlando, I mean, it just, I mean, I've done that. I've done it as a director, reviewed site plans when we had shortages, I get it. So, my point being is, when you have that one person or two people, and one takes off, and then while that person's off, and the other may get sick, you have a breakdown there, and that, our customers suffer. So, that, those are the kind of areas that we're looking at and trying to identify those single points of failure.
So, there's, there's more than one?
I believe there are, and I think, you know, I mean, I'll tell you, road and bridge was, I mean, IT, IT, you know, that, that was a single point of failure, you know, and we, we have a current firm on board, we're interviewing the IT directors, we have two more left, and we'll be making a selection, and just the way we approached the business there, even the organizational, you know, when I got in there and I looked at the organizational chart and how it was, it wasn't even hierarchical, it was tiered level, and so, and one of the first things our consultant said, and keep in mind, our, one of our chief consultants is the former state CIO, you know, former, you know, so I mean, I think, and then the firm is highly reputable. But, so there's that, and then even as we're meeting with like road and bridge, the fact that you have, like, when they could raise, you know, how many people here have, you know, are dump truck drivers? Everybody raises their, about, you know, maybe eight or 10 raised their hand. How many here are primaries? And you watch everybody's hand go down, and you have really one, and then one that's a secondary primary, and it's like, so would you need to move aggregate material? You're literally taking people off their other jobs. That's a problem.
And finally, and I, I do have some other questions after the other commissioners. John, have you ever heard or used the term, "Sometimes you have to blow the place up first"?
You know, I, I have heard and I have used, you know, I've, you know, so one of our consultants, I asked, you know, and you know that he's a former boss of mine, and he revamped the permitting process, of which I came in on the back end of that and helped with the implementation of software as a planner, but in order to fix the permitting process, the, and if the things that we hear described today from customers is, you, sometimes you've got to blow it up to fix it, you know, and you've got to just really get under the hood and just, I mean, just, just do it. And so, but, you know, people process culture. So, you got to have people there that are committed to doing that, and, and then the process, you know, focus on those small wins. I mean, we've got, I've got some things, some short-term improvements that some of our staff that we have that we're doing internal, and that could roll out to be customers, I mean, highly effective or, you know, at least meaningful customer service improvements. The staff were doing some of these little innovative ideas on their own to help their job be easier, and like, well, if we could roll that out to the- job be easier, and like, well, if we could roll that out to the public, that would be amazing.
Okay. Madam Chair, that's all I have now. I'm anxious to hear from the other commissioners. And for our public, typically, we do not have public comment on areas like this, but for today, I think it's, it's fitting that we have public comment for the health of this agency. Furthermore, I would ask that you be concise, and to the point, in the interest of everyone's times. Thank you, and I yield, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Flesher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And first and foremost, I want to thank Commissioner Law for putting this on the agenda. We had a conversation, as you did with all commissioners, I, I trust, because you told me that, that we would, it was an item on the agenda that also included commissioners' input, and we had a conversation. I was abundant in matters, and I, I did share some concerns. I will say that this was a bigger picture than you were looking through the viewfinder at time of hire. I, I agree that this is a larger concept, and there are many challenges. I, I hope they're all overcome. The challenges that you identified, you, you said clearly that we would, you've gone to consultants, I just want the public to know, because I, I had a discussion about the consultants, we are pretty well consulted, well, the entire organization is pretty well And again, it's not earmarked just for the change, it's earmarked for many different things, granting applications, changes, separate for SUE, there's many different consulting opportunities. But year before last, we spent 16 million, 435,899 dollars in consulting. Now, a small portion of that was due to the change. This past year, we spent 16, 18 million, no, 18 million for '22, '23. In '22, '23, which, as you embarked, we spent 16, 18 million and 455,000 dollars in consulting. That's, that's pretty impressive, that's a lot of consulting. We have to take the action and, and go forward. I believe, and my colleague said that he was the new guy on a block, that he was receiving complaints. In the slightly longer time that I'm here, this year has been the year of the complaint. If we had a, a calendar, the title would be the year of the complaint. We've had challenges, specifically with MGO, which I've brought to you many times, and we, I have to say thank you, because you've addressed, or the deputy or the assistant has addressed, the concerns on an individual basis. In other words, we're patching the holes. The system is in failure, and it's a systematic failure. MGO, the public should know that we're, we were spending a huge amount of money in flying in the MGO asset, the individual, to come here and help us out, and get everything going. The rollout was not good. The rollout was imperfect at best. And it has generated a lot of angst and acrimony regarding the permitting process, the engineering process, the, just, any process to do with building anything in this county has been a challenge. It's gotten worse. We need to get it better. And you mentioned it, we have to go for a new system? I, I don't, I don't know. The old system was working, this system was visioned as better, it started, and I, I think you personally have tried, but I think that, that's the bulk of the challenges here. And, you know, we're hurting our economy, we have people that are leaving, we have contractors that don't want to work here. And it's because of the, the challenges, and the, the stories, and the explanations that they get. So we need to repair that. So you asked me what, what my challenges were, or my input was, that's one of the biggest. The other biggest ones is, we have a lack of communication, our communication is definitely hampered. You identified it, we had positions where we had one person doing two or three jobs. We still have vacant positions in, in directorship, we have vacant positions in management, we have vacant positions in supervision, and we have vacant positions in the front line. We have been paled, and we are weakened. I haven't seen it get any better in the past 18 months. We're fixing some problems individually, patchwork, I call it, but we need to now let all this consulting actually take root, and actually have the rubber hit the tarmac, and we'll see some blue smoke and some action being happened. So that's just some of my concern. We, we, we need to be able to call and get a response, call and get action, call and get communication. And I think that that is probably one of the larger problems, is communication. With that, again, I, I thank Commissioner Law for putting this on the agenda, we have no canvas. You're, you're here 18 months, if that's the case, maybe perhaps, whatever, if there is a motion in, in, in the future here, perhaps it should include, let's do this again in the first week in December. In the first week in December, you'll have a, a deeper colorization of the canvas, we'll actually see a, a sharper picture. Because I think this is, the process is, we're identifying some challenges, we've been communicating about them, you heard some of them today, when we were talking about the Gifford Neighborhood Plan. I have heard the term blowing up, I, I've heard it here, I've, I've heard that it was discussed, that, and I think the place did get blown up. And we lost a lot of institutional knowledge, and we lost a lot of individuals, and we lost a lot of mechanism that was actually working, was not part of the bad culture, but it was part of the solution code. And in search for a solution code, to make it better, I think we've sat back a little bit. And it's very frustrating, we get the calls. I, I will tell you that I have never gotten this many contacts and calls in this past year than I did the previous 17 years in service. That's a lot, that's a lot. I cannot go into a store without getting a challenge. I can't go to a business. I get messages, I get phone calls, and again, it's, while it's not all on you, it's all on the system. The system, in, 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 any system and change, will have this type of process happening. I think in this situation, it's been amplified, and I think we have to get better at it. So I think in getting better at it, like I said, if there is anything that's a minus Commissioner Law's item, but if, if someone were to want to move a motion, I would also move that we would want to do this once again, first week in December, so that this way we have another three months to look back at this and say, look what has happened, and look at the changes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Orenman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And thank you, Commissioner Law, for bringing this forward, I appreciate it. Reading your item, you know, with the expect league request, the administrator presented the board an objective overview of his tenure since his start date, colleagues, achievements that have been accomplished, as well as obstacles that he has faced, and outlined the vision moving forward regarding Department of Personnel restructuring, et cetera. And I, I think he's, I think he's done that, I think he could be better at that. I think we need, and I've told him this, I think we need more, more updates more often, not every day, maybe not once a week, but probably twice a month, or at least once a month. We can do that in our private meetings, and we could do that here also. And I think we also need, on a regular basis, maybe the department heads update something, say, once a month to the board, and things of that nature. It should be easier to do now that we have a assistant, we have our deputy county administrator, we have an assistant county administrator, and we have an ombudsman, along with, along with the department heads, and I think that, that would be easier to do. So I, I agree with you on that, I think I would challenge him to, to do that, to provide more updates and, as to what's going on, especially when we have something that comes up right away, or something that's a, that's a pretty big deal, you know, those, those responses should be immediate, in my opinion, or as quick as he can to get back with this, with what a solution would be. On the other hand, I think John has done an exceptional job, because when he got in here, he wasn't handed a whole lot. You both said it, that he received this from two basically budget directors, everything had to be lean and main, and people got used to doing it that way for 20-plus years, even before that. And I can reflect on this a little bit, because I am a former county employee, and I know what we got and what we didn't get for 20 years. Guess what, commissioners, I never received a 10% raise in the Board of County Commissioners in 35 years that I was employed here. Never received a 10% raise. It would be in the forms of, we have to hide money, we have to do this, or we have to do that. So, so I can tell you, that's one thing that's very appreciated, and hearing from the firefighters out there, I've heard, I've heard many thanks for that. I appreciate the fact that he's going and talking to employees, that was never done before by the previous administration and others. And employees appreciate that, they appreciate when you're, when you're there and support them. But, so I would tell you, I think he's done a great job, I don't think he's handled, I don't think he was hand-handed a county that was in, in, it was in great financial shape, but it wasn't in great, it wasn't in great internal shape. And I use the analogy a lot, because you know, I'm a sports guy, that the people that are in this audience and this board, or the, the board, they're the team owners, we're the, we're the president and CEO, and our county administrators, the head coach. He has a playbook, he has directors, he has offensive line, defensive line, coach, quarterbacks, coach, all that sort of stuff. And they were supposed to carry out their direction to make the team successful. If they don't carry it out, if they don't fail, or if they do fail on that, they need to be replaced. It seems like sometimes we, as commissioners, get involved in regards to this, as, well, we like some, we like some better than others. I remember that, and I'll say it right now, I remember when Rich Burka, who was our Director of Public Works, and also Director of Facilities, and also Director of Building and Grounds, and also Directors of many, many directorship jobs. And one thing I'll say about Rich, he knew his job, he knew his job well, but his, but his people skills were not the best in the world. And I remember that there was people out there that wanted him fired. Jason Brown at the time was going through the process, but that wasn't good enough. So things had to move on, and John came in, John reviewed it, and John let him go. I, I miss Rich for his professionalism with regards to knowing his job, but I don't miss Rich for his people skills. So those are things that the county administrator was faced with. Again, if your coaches, your assistant coaches aren't going to follow through and do their job accordingly, then they need to be replaced. This is not, this is a career, this is a job, this is, this is what you're supposed to do, you're here to serve the public, and you're here to serve the public well. And if you can't do the job, we're not here to baby you, you either do the job, or you get in, or you get out. And so that's, that's kind of the way I look at this. Again, he was faced with a lot of challenges. I've seen an increase in our customer service, because we have preached to Mr. Katanich from day one, customer service, customer service. We were tired of getting the complaints from the building department, from people not being able to get their permits through, from different, different things and, and different, different departments. Probably because we didn't have enough people to hold responsible, to be in charge, or to make sure that things were getting done properly. So I'm willing to give him some time to, to figure this thing out, because there were a lot of problems when, when he started. When I first came to Commissioner, I noticed them right away. I mean, it was everything as simple as, we had the Chromius website in the state of Florida, the, the customer service was terrible, people were getting held on the phone, a half an hour, 45 minutes, waiting on hold. Who does that? Nobody does that. So we have to change the culture. It's just like, again, it's just like a sports thing. And I'll use, and that's probably not an example, I was going to use Florida State, but they're 0-2, they're 0-2 right now.
Don't pick on me.
But a professional football team comes in, maybe the first year, they have an average season. Well, they have to end up moving forward, and you want them in the Super Bowl, you want them in the championship season. Because it seems like, other than what Commissioner Law is asking his memo, it's going further than that, that we need to tell him, okay, coach, you've had your first year under your belt, we understand you went 5-5 this year, it's time to go 10-0, and we need to do that, so, so Mr. Katanich, that's why I'm asking. We've got a lot of things on the, on the plate to do, we need to move a lot of things forward, we've probably gone, because, you know, the way that, what you were handed, you've made some improvements, we've gone 6-5, 5-5, now we need to go 10-0 in the year ahead. And that's what, that's what, that's what we expect, but, and, and I think that's where we need to go. Yes, are we perfect? Are we, have we solved every problem? Absolutely not. We still need to do better in customer service, we still need to do better in turning over permits, doing engineering, we still need to make our building and grounds better, we still need to improve our recreation, we still need to prove, improve our fire rescue system, we still need to do a lot of things. But we also, in the past, have, again, given folks 10% raises, we've increased the Sheriff's Department budget, we've done numerous things in this county that have been pluses. So I'm going to say we're moving ahead, again, 10-0 is my goal for next year. So I could go on and on, but I'm going to stop right there, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Moss?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm going to tell you a true story, that probably the county administrator himself doesn't remember, because he's been so busy. But his very first day on the job, he's, he ended that day in Gifford at a birthday party for Dr. Crystal Bajol, who's the founder of the Gifford Youth Orchestra, for those who don't know. And I had invited him several weeks before he started, I was a little nervous about asking him, because I didn't know him, and of course, he doesn't know me. But he said, well, I'm booked that entire first day, but if, if I can do it, you know, when my day ends, I'll be there. And, and he did. And what a wonderful beginning that was, because in that room, there were probably about 20, or maybe two dozen, community leaders of Gifford, and each one introduced himself and said what his connection was to the other person, which was fascinating, even for me. I mean, I didn't, I didn't know the, the whole history, you know, somebody who was his, his third grade science teacher, you know, those kind of stories. And there were two cakes, there was a birthday cake for Dr. Bajol, and there was also a cake for Mr. Katanich, which, you know, was a wonderful There was a birthday cake for Dr. Bujol and there was also a cake for Mr. Katanich, which, you know, was a wonderful beginning to start day one with community outreach. As far as complaints go, this is not for me the year of the complaint. The year of the complaint started, and I'm talking about building and permitting primarily now, since we were focusing on that. For me, it started in 2016 when I was the mayor of the city of Vero Beach. And people would come to complain about building, the building permitting process in department. And I always felt bad. I always felt like, you know, in fact, I think I would just tell them, "Look, I'm, I'm not passing the buck, but we, we don't do that here. You know, the city doesn't do it. I'm sorry, you know, you'll have to go to the county." So I knew that there were problems at least since 2016. And, and then more recently, yes, you know, I mean, over time, I should say, by, by more recently, by the way, I mean, since I've been here, which is 2020. So in the last four years. Had a lot of, I was surprised frankly, because I didn't expect quite the number of complaints and the number of problems with building and, you know, building and permitting. But yes, it reached its peak and there was a reference to this with that 21st century amendment distillery. I felt embarrassed. I mean, that was on the front page of TC Palm. And I'm going to take a moment just to share with you, for those who perhaps didn't see the article the first time, this is last February. And this is Mr. Pelashi, who graciously gave his time to review the entire process with us. But he said, "If I don't see it," because I'm sure he's not the only one who's thinking this. "If I don't see a change in the building department, then it won't be in Indian River County." And he was referring to another business that he planned to open. And with reference to Vero Beach City Council, this is a writer, and by the way, the article was written by Larry Reisman. And the title is Andrea Stowani's Six Words to a Better Vero Beach Downtown: Get Government Out of the Way. And it was published February 6th of this year. So Vero Beach City Council, and this, now I'm quoting the article, "Made it clear the county's building department was a barrier to investment in the city." And this is Mr. Reisman speaking now. "My impression Monday night," and I think most of us were there at this meeting, I know Mr. Katanich was and I remember Commissioner Erman was there. But Mr. Reisman, Larry Reisman, said, "My impression Monday night is the city won't give Katanich a long leash to resolve permitting issues before finding a different building watchdog." And in fact, last Friday, when, and I know Commissioner Adams was there, Commissioner Erman and myself, at the Taxpayer Association meeting, which hosted the Vero Beach City Council Candidate Forum, it was mentioned again, it came up again. So the city, this is, and that was just days ago. So there, we know that there's work to be done. I know there have been complaints, you know, at least since 2016. And frankly, I myself, I'm speaking for myself now, I was elected to change this place because a lot of people hated what was going on here. They just absolutely hated it. And it's a fact of the matter that my predecessor had, you know, endorsed or appointed or anointed or tried to somebody else, but I, I got the job anyway. And I'm, you know, and I'm really happy to be here. But I have to tell you, a lot of what needed to be changed could not be, given the, the staff that was, that was here. And I'm talking about 2020, going back to 2020. I'm like, you, 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 it was like running into a brick wall here. As opposed to what we have now, which is someone who listens and someone who does research. And yes, you need to plan. I come from a business background and by that I mean a large business. And when you're running a large business, you have to take that time to plan. And money spent on planning is wisely spent as long as you implement it. And I've already told people, I hope you don't mind, but I've already told everybody, we are definitely implementing these plans because this man is an Army Ranger. They don't make plans and not implement. That's something bureaucrats do. And I don't think he's ever going to be a bureaucrat. So, thank you and God bless.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Law, for bringing this forward and providing a forum where we can have a productive conversation. So everybody's brought up a lot of different things and I'm going to try to kind of go down the list and give my two cents on, on those things. Communication to the board. I, I do agree that we have weekly meetings with John. I think that, you know, we all have our priorities that we talk about and not all of our priorities are consistent across the commission. What, one of the things, and we had the same issue in Felsmer, one of the things we did at that point was institute what they call managers, managers matters. And the city manager provides kind of a bullet point list, either at every meeting or twice a month, maybe in this case, it's once a month, of issues that are on the horizon, of issues that need to be updated. I see that as a tool that we maybe could implement and maybe that's done on a monthly basis and emailed to all the commissioners. So we all know what issues are out there, what we need to be thinking about, where are those points of concern and what's being worked on. I would agree that I think coming from the attorney's office as something similar would be appropriate. So we know what legal issues are out there and, and what concerns that they have. I think it would be, it would build communication across ourselves and, and keep our jobs from being siloed. The organization has been siloed and I think we also have been siloed and, and so I think that would help. You know, when we all, and I, I watched our interviews with the candidates when we hired John the other day. And one of the things that kept coming up and one of the things that we all kind of alluded to and asked for or mentioned was that we wanted to see change. But we didn't define what that change was and we didn't define what that looked like. And now we have change and now we're upset. And that's fine, change is, change is hard. Change is hard across the board, whether you define it or not. But I think one of the things that we didn't do as commissioners is we didn't communicate clearly what that change meant and what we expected. And we didn't prepare the organization for change. It's fine to say we want change, but then if you start doing it without explaining why and what you're trying to solve and how you're going to go about doing it, you end up with a lot of angst and a lot of confusion. And confusion leads to pushback and pushback leads to stagnation because you're not able to accomplish that change because you're just kind of working against each other. So for me, when I said I want to change, what I meant was, I was tired of getting the phone calls about how Indian River County was not business friendly. How Indian River County was so difficult to work with that nobody wanted to come here. How Indian River County was basically a non-starter. And people would just, people, businesses, economic development projects, whatever the case may be, would just keep on going by Indian River County. And that was fine at the time and that, that worked for us. But I'm, I was, those were the phone calls, those were the complaints that I was getting, that I was tired of hearing, that I wanted to see change on. Now, did that mean, as some people may have interpreted it as or have alluded to in conversations I've had with the community, that that meant I wanted us to be open arms, welcoming everybody into the community, unbridled growth, willy-nilly all over the place? No, that is not at all what I meant. Not at all. I would be totally happy if nobody ever found us again, seriously. But what I meant was, I wanted people to know there was a process that was predictable and consistent. And that if people came here, they would understand that if they started at A, they would end up at Z. That they wouldn't have to go from A to P, back to D, to U, to Z, back to A, around the apple cart, and then finally sometime years later, get to Z. That's what I meant by change. I don't know what everybody else meant, but I want that to be clearly understood because I have heard from employees. I have heard from residents. I have heard from businesses that we want to change the process because we want to make, we want to open the doors and let everybody come in. That's not what I meant. I just meant that it should be predictable and it should not be an unpleasant experience. We as commissioners set policy, we as commissioners set direction. And I think what we didn't do was clearly define what that expectation was. And when we just say change, change is an umbrella term that means so very much and there's so many different ways you can go about that. The other thing that I think we've all, and Indian River County has benefited from, is that in the past, we have staff and leadership that has relationships. We, the honest answer is, we are very insular county. I mean, we've all, for the most part, either worked with each other, grown up with each other, have family that has, have, have worked with each other in different roles. You know, went to school together, are related. Indian River County is just a, it's a small community, even if we, now that we, even when you have more people moving here, you can still go to the Zippy Mart on any given day and know half the people in there. You can still go to Publix or Walmart and run into a half a dozen people that you know. And we have benefited by having leadership that has come from the inside and has those relationships. But we all knew, when we hired John and we all voted for him, that he didn't have those relationships because he was coming from the outside. I do think there's been hiccups in trying, in him trying to make those relationships. But I also think that we as commissioners have to help him build those relationships, which is one of the reasons why I have been attending the meetings with him with staff. I could very easily, we could all very easily have said, "John, you need to go do this, get this done by X date, go out and do that." But I also know when you have a new person coming in, people are distrustful of that person. And they don't have relationships with that person. And in the lack of relationships and in the lack of trust and in the lack of understanding and friendship and knowledge, you build up in your mind or you listen to the people that you think have those relationships and knowledge. And I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that if we want to be successful, that we are helping build those relationships with the community and introduce John around. And that is because too, we need to be setting the stage for what those relationships need to be. If there needs to be a relationship with Roseland, for instance, because we, you know, when we were doing the Septic to Sewer project, I would like to take John to that community association meeting and introduce him around and then have him sit there and understand and have the community explain to him the importance of the relationship that they have had with the county. The same with Gifford. There is a, there is an importance of that relationship that needs to be understood that somebody coming from the outside is not going to pick up on unless we are doing our job to help get that accomplished. So I do think there's been hiccups and missteps and potholes that have been fallen into and we heard that today. And I apologize for that and that's something that we will work on rectifying. And I would hope that after today, that from today's conversation, John, that you do take, and I know we have had this conversation the past, in the past month, that you do need to be out meeting and being seen and being available to outside organizations, whether it's businesses, community organizations, property owners, whatever the case may be, the chambers, all those kinds of things. There are relationships that need to be built so we can earn the trust to move forward with the things that we and the community wants to see us move forward with. I would agree that there's been a lot of planning that's happened in the past year. And because we spent a lot of time on planning, there hasn't been a lot of time to do things. And I think all of the commissioners, I know I've had the conversation, I've just heard several of the commissioners say that they've had the conversation of implementation. We're ready to move into from a planning phase to an implementation phase. But at the same time, I think we have to acknowledge that in this election cycle, what we've heard from the community is that we need to have plans. And we don't have a plan and I don't, I can't tell you how many forums and community groups and, and, that we heard from that said, "We don't, we can't imagine, why doesn't Indian River County have a strategic plan? If you don't have a plan, how do you know where you're going?" I mean, we heard it over and over again. So I do think there's value in planning. I think where we may have made a misstep is that we got, we are planning too much all at once. And maybe some of that planning needs to be, to Commissioner Law's point, triaged. And some planning is more important than others and some planning can wait a little bit later. We don't have to do it all at once. So I would hope and I would expect that we move into an implementation phase. I did just want to touch Commissioner Flesher on a comment that you made about calling and getting action. And I don't disagree with you. However, what I can say is at all of our meetings that we've had with staff, which I have found just as illuminating and educational, I think, as everybody else that have attended, is there are some departments, Public Works is, is the prime example that comes to my head, but there are other departments, Planning and Building are amongst them as well, that when we call, when it, because they are understaffed, because there are jobs that are open that haven't been filled, when we call as commissioners down there, there's a frustration among staff that they have to drop everything that they're doing and then address a commissioner's concern. And that means they're not able to do the other jobs and the other work that they were already planning to do. Because there is only so many grader operators, if somebody calls with a grading complaint and that means that grader has to go from, you know, I'll use Felsmer as an example, one side of town to another or out to VLE to fix that problem, now they're behind on their normal schedule and now those people start calling. So I think that we also need to recognize as commissioners that when we ask for certain things, that that means that something else isn't going to get done. And if we want to solve that problem, one of the deliverables that maybe we need to talk about today and expectation is, now that the compensation study is done and has been voted on and will be implemented October 1st, that we expect to see jobs starting to get filled. And if we're not able to fill those jobs instead of waiting for four or five years to be upset about it, would we have a crisis mode that the department heads or the division heads are empowered to come back to us as policymakers and the ones that approve the budget and talk about what we need to do to make those positions competitive so we can actually fill them? I think that would be very helpful. And I don't think we've ever talked about that, so I just, I want us to understand the impact we have on the organization as well. When we charge staff with doing projects at commission meetings or when we call down to do that, that means, since we have such a small staff, that there's other things that aren't going to happen. So we need to own our role in some of this, I feel it. The other thing I, I want to say is what, if we are going to have regular updates, which I don't disagree, I do think that that needs to happen. I would like to see an email update on a monthly basis. Or, you know, I think weekly might be a little too much, but bi-monthly or monthly an email update. I would like to see a public update where we can kind of talk about it like, like this. Quarterly is fine with me or every four months, whatever you prefer. But if there's something that we want to see, if there's something that we want John to accomplish by the next time we have this conversation, I think we need to be very specific about what that is and there needs to be a timeframe. Commissioner Flesher, you mentioned, I believe, December 1st. But what is it that we want to see accomplished by then? Because I think part of the problem and the Because I think part of the problem and the angst that we're hearing and that we're experiencing is that we haven't been specific about what those expectations are. We've just said, change this or fix this, but what and how does that look like? Because what it looks like to me, it may be different for you, and I think for clarity's perspect, for clarity and to make sure we can move the dial, we need to be specific. So that's what I would ask you guys.
Well, Madam Chair, um, a, a, again, I, I did pick some first, uh, it happened to be December 3rd is the meeting, December 17th is the meeting and then the year is done. Um, accordance with your discussion as well, quarterly might be appropriate. It gives transparency to all of us consistently in the public forum and it lets the public know that things are happening in a positive direction, kind of like a quarterly report card. Um, I, I think it's, it's overdue. I, I think it, it has not been done in the past. I think that, uh, you know, uh, the days of, don't look behind the curtain, okay? Even though we see Toto's shoes and the, and the little dog, uh, I, I think tho, those are gone. And, and I think that if we're serious about change and our county administrator is making that change and moving in a positive momentum, then I think quarterly, general report of this is happening, that's happening, we're moving this forward, we've had some concerns, we're doing this, we're doing that. I think any, any, any good leader has no prohibition in, in being able to publicly display what they're doing. And, uh, I, I think that a quarterly report would be, uh, for the time being, as we're going through this transition, as we're running into hiccups, as we're running into challenges and complaints, I think it would be most appropriate if we did a quarterly report. Maybe the year end, and maybe it's the 3rd, maybe it's the 17th. County administrators' update as to what's happening, a progressive report, progression report, I don't mean to mention the word progressive, progression report. And, uh, I, I think that if we start that off quarterly, maybe there'll be, you know what? It wouldn't be a perfect world if there would be no reason to have it at all because we did get that better, that we did get all the hiccups out of the way. The other thing I want to mention is, uh, so that, that's my comment on that.
Okay.
Uh, as far as what you're, you stated about, you know, calling and, and people saying, well, Commissioner wants this, they're going to stop and all that, I was referring to the county administrator. I was referring to the deputy county administrator. I was referring to the assistant county administrator because it's tough to get things that have to filter down to an organization that has a split directorship or a vacant directorship and then it goes, by the time that happens, somebody's had their birthday in, in their challenge. Okay? So, um, it, it slows the process, but again, the public should know, we have, uh, zero capacity for direction of staff. We direct and discuss with the staff member that we have access to. As speaking with the county administrator, um, he has directed to, uh, gee, well, call assistant or call the deputy, um, and that's great. I, I'm just, I'm not talking about calling the front line, knocking on the window.
I apologize and I misunderstood.
We, we don't, we, we're not to do that. Uh, we only have the right to inquiry as to any inaction that's taking place, full discovery of any action that's taking place as county commissioners, but at no time did I infer that we were interfering with.
Okay, I apologize and I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
The energy of frontline personnel, uh, we do that with our county administrator.
Okay. Commissioner Lauer?
I agree, I think, uh, I agree, I think we could start with, um, with quarterly as Commissioner Flesher said, hopefully that could go down. But I do want to touch real quickly on succession planning and, uh, I know, Madam Chair, you mentioned about, uh, John coming in as an outsider and kind of the shock and awe that , uh, the agency observed. I take that a step further and I think everyone knows my position on promoting within. And some of the positions in recent months have in fact been outsiders, whether we have internal candidates that, uh, either didn't put in for the position or, uh, in someone's eyes weren't qualified. The way, in, in my opinion, of building a trustworthy agency is having that young fellow or that young lady know that they can promote within the agency. Oftentimes, an employee, he or her, uh, will go home and talk to their significant other about what's going on at their workplace and, you know, well, that certain position opened and I hope I really get that position. And that message is talked about over and over and over until that mess, until that position is filled or isn't filled. Oftentimes, you'll have the spouse came home, come home and he or she will say, how was your day? And that employee will say, it's the same old stuff. Well, what would you like for dinner? Or whatever you want. But then when they have interaction, um, from leadership and they have an opportunity to have, uh, some type of inspiration or hope that they may get that position, and they come home from work and he or she says, how was your day? And they say, fantastic. Actually had a conversation with the boss. You know, it was a really good day. What would you like for dinner? Well, why don't we go have Chinese food or whatever? So those are the dynamics that we have to look at when we're talking about changing the culture, changing the agency. Uh, I've been in several meetings recently observing some of our, uh, directors and department heads, and one thing, to be quite frank with you, is I, I don't see succession planning. And that has to happen in the organization. However, if you hire from the outside, what is that telling the body of your agency? That's telling the body of your agency that I'll never get to the top in this place. I'll never get to the top. Why should I give 70, 80, or heck, 100%? I'm never going to get to the top. My directors or my department heads are trending externally. That has to change. That has to change. Because if we want this agency to grow, there has to be that young man or young lady that knows in fact they can get to the top, that they can be the county administrator one day. That's how we inspire them. That's all I have to say about that.
I would definitely agree with that. Um, for my suggestion, if we're going to do the quarterly report, that we just set it for the first meeting of whatever that quarter is. So if we're going to start with December, I would suggest it's always the first meeting of the month, just so it's consistent. And, you know, we, that way too, there won't be any confusion about, well, I thought you meant this meeting versus that meeting.
That's fine.
Um, so that would be December 3rd, correct?
December 3rd, if, if that's, uh, the will of the board, uh, you know, we'll have a, a winter, spring, summer, fall. We'll actually bring seasons to Indian River County.
That would be nice.
Every four months, do that and maybe by the, at the end of that, that fiscal year, we will, or calendar year, we won't need the quarterly report any further. It's going to be so good. If, let's look at this positively, that we're going to be, keep getting these lifts where we say, you know what, we could spend time on other issues.
But I do look forward to that, being able to have a forum in which the five of us can discuss different things. We don't have a forum to do that. We don't have a place to do that. So I'd agree, I would, I hope they wouldn't necessarily be necessary, but I think it's still a very good opportunity to provide direction and as a group, talk about concerns and talk about, um, positions and, and talk about what's going on because if we want the organization to change, if we want to, to build on, on the things that we've talked about, then I think we have to change the way we do business too. And part of that is having those group conversations. So I look forward to them personally.
It is healthy to have them every quarter. Not only, they don't have to be long, some agendas may be longer than the others, but it's healthy for the agency, it's healthy for the public, healthy for the employees. And as important, uh, that is indeed part of the succession planning and his or her subordinates being able to participate in lieu of, in their absence or what have you. But it's overall healthy for an agency. This should be, like I, I mentioned two hours ago, uh, the board of directors getting a report from the CEO, it's, it's that simple.
I would agree. Um, I would also like to say, um, for expectations for that meeting in December, what I would like to see accomplished by then is to have, um, the directors that are open, the directorships that are open, so IT, building and development, or building and, uh, facility services and planning and development services. I would like to see, I think there's plenty of time between now and then to have those positions filled. I, I don't want to continue with, um, I understand the situation with road and bridge, but it just took entirely too long to fill that position. And I think the organization suffered because of that, because there's things within that department. I hear all the time about engineering, there's things within that department, that process and coordination, um, with building and facilities that needs to be addressed and not having somebody there. Um, and if we're going to realign the permitting process, we need to have that person in place to start getting that alignment so we don't end up with, here we are, six months later and, um, we feel progress hasn't been made. So that would be my request. If anybody has any other specifics that you want to see by December, I would encourage you to be specific and let John know. But I know, is there anything else from the commissioners?
I know, I was going to say, I would, I would agree with you on that. I think quarterly is good. They don't, like, like I said, they don't have to be lengthy at times and it doesn't stop him from, from doing it at the next meeting if there's something we need to know that we need to talk about or an email that they can send us or in a meeting we could tell, we just need to, you know, to be in the know what's going on.
Okay. Ms. Prado?
Thank you. Um, Chairman, I just have a question because this is also, you want that from the county attorney as Ms. Schuler is starting on Monday. What, do you want me to just have her watch this for direction as far as you want quarterly updates from her or is there anything you would like me to provide to her so she has that as she's coming in?
She can, we can provide that to her. I am going to, um, she had, she will have individual meetings with us when we get started and I'm quite sure that we will express to her that our expect, expectation will be, and it doesn't need to be anything magical necessarily, she will be coming in, but just a status update, bullet points of, of maybe some sticking points, some things that we might need to help her address as she moves forward in that division or department.
Thank you, I just didn't want to.
Yeah, no worries. Yeah, and she's not here, so it's not like, you know, we're going to be like, oh, surprise, you didn't know about it, you should have had this on here.
Once again, John's been swimming for 18 months, uh, she's at the zero entry level, just getting here. She's, she's going to have a lot with us, so I, I think maybe we can set that up at another time.
Okay. Fantastic.
You agree?
Yeah, I think, I, yeah, she needs to just get here and get acclimated first.
She's still happy to be here?
She still is so far. Yep. So I know we were going to open this up for public comment, what I would ask is that, to reiterate what Commissioner Lauer said, um, please be succinct and respectful, we don't normally, uh, do this, but this is a time for productivity so we can move forward. Hi. And I need you to state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Scott McCracken, uh, 966 29th Street. Uh, I've been a contractor for 34 years. I'm a two-time past president of the Treasure Coast Home Builders Association, as well as a past president of the Florida Home Builders Association. Uh, I've been here a long time. I was here when Esther Reimer was a building official, for those of you long enough to remember her. And I've had a good relationship with every building official all the way up through the current one, Scott McAdam. I'm here because of, uh, all I can say is that it's a rumor that, uh, Scott is to be terminated and that would be a travesty. Uh, I understand there's been some complaints. I would surmise that the vast majority of them are because of the new software that we've implemented. Uh, granted, i- it's been horrible. It's been a horrible experience for me. I use it all the time. That being said, Scott still comes to our breakfast meetings at TCBA and he takes the hard questions. That's not easy. He gets up there, people pound him and he answers them the best he can and hears their complaints and, and deals with them. Uh, he's always available, he always answers our calls, our emails, if you want to see him in person, he's available for that as well. To me, asking or a public official doing that, uh, you, you can't ask for much more because a lot of them don't do that. Uh, he's been a partner with TCBA and the building industry as a whole, so we stand behind him and I hope he's not going anywhere. I also understand that we lost our planning director. That was through his own accord of a resignation and that, that would also be a travesty. Piggybacking on the gentleman from Gifford that we're speaking about, um, time and history and things like that, if you lose Scott and Andy, you will lose a tremendous wealth of knowledge with those two gone. So I suggest you do everything in your capacity to keep them on and get them back. Our building process is straightforward. I heard some commissioners speak that people coming into the county and they have issues with the way things are done. There's a very standard procedure of how we do things and it's been that way for years. Now, is it the same way as Miami or Brevard or Orlando? No, it's a learning process. And if you're a homeowner going through it the first time, it's a learning process for that and can be frustrating. But once you learn the process, I found it to be very straightforward and easy to deal with. No offense to our county to the South, but I think we can all agree that we do not want to model our county after them. They are pretty much open borders for everything that wants to be built down there. So I hope that, that we keep what we have and we don't go after what, what they have. As Commissioner, you said, if we could keep everybody out, we would, but obviously we can't do that, growth is inevitable, but, um, we just need to keep it controlled. Uh, and the one last thing I'll close with is that I heard the term being used, uh, you need to blow it up to fix it. Well, there's also another term used, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I just, I want to address something before we go much further. I too have heard from many people in the community who have called me with concerns related to gossip and innuendo and conspiracy theories. And that's, that's fine, that's what we're here to do and those, that's what we're here to answer. But let me be very clear that all of our employees are valued. All of our employees are valued. And our employees that have left, that have decided to resign, they were valued and I respect the decision that they made and I'm sure it wasn't an easy decision. That being said, the employees that are still here, as long as they are doing their job, there is no issue. So, and I believe that there is a lot of employees here that are doing their job. But there's a lot of drama from the outside and the inside about who is doing, everybody's very worried about everybody else and everybody else's job. So they're not focused, and I'm saying that from the upstairs all the way to the downstairs. We need to focus and everybody needs to focus on what their job and their role is and we will be fine. It's the same thing I tell the girls at the restaurant. It's the same thing I tell the girls at the restaurant. You know, don't worry about this person, this person will take care of themselves, one way or another, by not doing their job or doing their job, but if you're so focused on them that you're not doing your job, now you're creating a problem for yourself. So I know there's a lot of gossip, the grapevine in Indian River County, the game of telephone is very prevalent, and I think for myself, and I've heard from other employees in the building, that we just need to ratchet the drama level down so everybody can start doing their job, and so we can focus on the things that need to be focused on and changed, and I mean that in all due respect. And I do appreciate, and I have said in each of our meetings with the divisions and the departments, that everybody here is valued, irregardless of what you've heard, everybody's here is valued, and we don't want anybody to leave. And if somebody does not have the tools to do their job, or they feel like they are on some hit list that doesn't exist, because I've heard that, too, that they need to reach out, my door is open, now, most of the commissioners' doors are open, John has made it very clear that his door is open. Come and talk to us, and let's put some of these rumors to rest, because we cannot move forward and we cannot make decisions based on rumors. And the last thing I'll say is, there has been more of an investment in training and skill sets for our employees in the past two years than I've seen in the six years before that. Our goal is to give everybody the skills that they need to be successful at their job, and some of these jobs aren't easy, and when you are hiring people from the inside, sometimes it's even harder for them to do their job, because you are asking somebody to now supervise somebody who was their friend and their coworker. And I can say that, again, using the restaurant as an example, I love to hire from the inside, because those are the employees I know, and those are the employees I can depend on, and those are the employees that know me and know my brand and know what we are as a restaurant and know our history. But it also is a struggle, because now I'm taking somebody who was a line cook and putting them into a kitchen management position, where they have to enforce rules on people that were their coworkers, and that's very, very hard. It's very hard to remain friends, and it's a very hard thing to do, so we have been trying to give people the skill sets they need to move up in the organization. And we are invested in our employees, because we understand, to Commissioner Lore's point, and I very much agree with him, you're not gonna build an organization if you're not building it up from the inside. Your inside roots, that institutional knowledge, that's where it's at, but we have to give people the training and the skill sets to get there. So I just want to put some of those rumors to bed, because I know they're floating out there all over the place. Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Thank you, I'm Deb Frazier, I'm the executive officer of the Treasure Coast Builders Association. Just a couple of quick thoughts. First of all, I keep hearing building department, building department, building department, and as the head of the Treasure Coast Builders Association, trust me, I probably hear twice the complaints that you do, and I want to thank some of my members who have come here today to hear what maybe is going to be done and happen in going forward, and Scott is correct, the new system, and I think it was mentioned before, has had some bumps along the road, but I will tell you again, and I know Scott McCracken said it, but I will say it again, Scott McAdam came to every single one of our meetings, and several of you have been here, thank you so much, to talk about, and even brought in somebody from MGO to find out and talk about the complaint. But one of the things I will say is, nobody has reached out to me at all to say, could we get your builders together and sit down and talk about this problem? And I will tell you, I invited all of my Indian River builders here today, and you know what some of them said to me? I'm not gonna come because there can be repercussions, because I have permits in the system, and I am concerned that if I show up, that there will be repercussions. So I want to make you aware, it is the perception, I'm not saying it's true, but that is the builders' perceptions, that if they speak up. So what I would like to suggest to you, if you really want to make the building, the system work, all of that, blowing up a system that you've already invested so much money in is very difficult, and I know would be a very difficult decision for you all to make, to just throw away that money, but maybe there are ways that we can help you be better with that system and so forth. So I'd like to make that suggestion, and I'm just sorry that I haven't reached out sooner, but Scott reached out, and again, he comes to our meetings, we talk, if I have a problem specifically with something, I call him directly, and it does get taken care of. So I just do want to say that we have a wonderful, as the Builders Association, relationship with the building department. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for that offer. I think that is very appropriate, and we'd love to have the help. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, I've sat through all of this, and first and foremost, Madam Chair, the lady just said something, I have several pending complaints. People are afraid of their jobs, people are afraid of their jobs, they want to file complaints with me, but they're afraid of the repercussions. I've sat here, and listen, the inference was made about John being out at Dr. Bujo's, that was orchestrated. It wasn't a welcome committee, it was orchestrated, the birthday cake and all of that, so don't infer that it was a Gifford thing, it wasn't. Commissioner Irman, you used the analogy of a football coach, sometime the coach ain't no good, we have to look at all aspects of it. Madam Chair, when you go out with John, I know you, I trust and believe you, but there's an inference that you got his back, and people are intimidated. The county is one of the biggest, best employers in, around, you pay good money. People can't readily afford to lose their jobs, they're not gonna stir, they're not gonna cause trouble. If it ain't fixed, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. One of my dilemmas is, and thank you, you openly apologized to the Gifford community, but you didn't do it, you were not the culprit. As I leave here today, based on all I've heard, that, hey, Fred and Tony and Joe, you might as well have stayed home, because there's nothing relative to you being treated better when it's inferred that we're doing this, we're doing that, and that's a good job, and that's a good job, but where was all of this that day? As a 71-year-old black man, military veteran, Vietnam veteran, fought for his country, who served his community, get insulted, diminished, placated by one of your officials, just doesn't work for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good afternoon, Tim Zork, 7557 15th Street, Vero Beach, and it's great to be on this side of the microphone. I'm also past president of Treasure Coast Builders Association, and wanted to expand on something that Deb Frazier had mentioned. You know, earlier today, when this started out, everybody was guessing what time would we get on the agenda, you probably had 50-plus percent of the revenue payers into the enterprise fund of the building department that were here and interested what's going on, and a lot of it was rumors or not in support of the effort Scott makes on an ongoing basis to try to do the best he can in that position. But with this being an enterprise fund, it's a little bit different than public works, public works is an enterprise fund, it's funded by the taxpayers. We, as the industry users, it costs us money when the system doesn't work well. You know, when a permit comes out late, then you've got a customer living in a hotel that make them happy, and it's just a domino effect. But I don't know how this could be incorporated, and I'm not nominating myself by any means, it would be up to something Deb would put together, but we used to have an advisory board, it was, used to be called CSAC, it was a different, for a different set of purposes, but you could have something where you had a few of the members of TCBA that would, you know, work jointly with the building department and with the county to really look at these problems and how to best address them, and what's the source of them. In years past, when I would review permit complaints, they ranged from the applicant hasn't, that they hired hadn't applied yet, to it's stuck in utilities, or it's stuck in public works, or in planning, probably 19 times out of 20, it was not the building department's fault, they were viewed and pending, waiting for the other five departments to sign off. So some way of the members being a little bit more active as we were back in the 90s and early 2000s, it really kind of gave a voice and helped solve some of the issues early on. One thing I could just say on Scott's behalf, he's respectful, he's responsive, a nice guy to work with. You don't always get the answer that you want, you know, when, sometimes if you're meeting with a plans examiner, he'll sit in on it, and, you know, it's just trying to get clarification to a discrepancy between the architect, the building code, the accessibility code, the NFPA code, you know, they all do not mesh perfectly page to page. So with that, just that suggestion of getting some industry involvement, I think might help move things along a little better. And actually, I'm, and speaking of MGO, I had a special hammer that was gonna be my MGO smash my computer screen, but I have, it has grown on me, I have become a better user, I've used a tutorial, if you're not a frequent user, I could see the frustration level would be off the charts. But now, before I came here today, uploaded five documents, took me less than five minutes, got the acknowledgements as I'm driving here to the meeting, that they have been received into the system, so I think there's good parts of MGO, CD Plus. I was here the day CD Plus went live in like 1984, 85, we thought that was the best thing since sliced bread, now it's a curse, you can't get rid of it because of its history, but MGO, it seems to be making progress, I don't know where all the other glitches are at, but for me as a user, I've become a better user by taking the time to train myself on it, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for that feedback. I think having the industry offer to help and get involved, we always, we're always looking for people to get involved, so I really appreciate that. Welcome.
Welcome. Joe Palavan, I live at 6450 Tropical Way, and I'll keep it very brief, because I know we're all tired. One of the things I'll agree with, what Commissioner Lore said about promoting within, everything he said, ditto, I'm not gonna add to it, I agree with everything you said. I think people have to know they can be advanced in the position and the place they're in, I agree with that 100%. And secondly, as far as leaving John with a bunch of problems and giving him a bunch of headaches, I think the most negative thing that we handed John was the building department, it needed reworked, revised, but I don't think we handed him a broken county, I resent that, I disagree with it. Let's be reasonable, people, we live in the most desirable state in the United States that people want to come to, and in the state of Florida, the most desirable county that people want to come to is Indian River County. I'm a builder, I'm a developer, I have developers and builders and investors calling me every day wanting to come here. We're desired, not because we did things wrong, we're desired because we did a lot of things right. So I've had it told me several times lately, Joe, you know, you have to get right, you have to have new blood, you have to have changes. You know, I kind of like seeing some of the old blood, when I get into some of these meetings sometimes, instead of looking around the meeting room and seeing nobody I recognize. I don't think that we need drastic changes, I think we did things well in this county, that's why the county's in the shape it's in, that's why the county's so desirable, and it's terribly desirable, believe me, everybody wants to come to Indian River County. We can change some things, maybe, make some cleanups, what have you, but, you know, we didn't hand John a broken system that's a terrible county to walk into, I just disagree with that 100%. I worked in all the counties here, Prior County, Miami, Dade County, Palm Beach, St. Lucie, I worked in them all. And I think that our county, even though we've had some bumps we had to get over, is one of the most desirable counties to live in, maybe sometimes not the most desirable county for me to work in as a contractor, because I couldn't get away with all the crap here, I couldn't sell them to other counties, but that's just the way it is, that's what makes us such a good county. So I don't think that we have to apologize for our county, I think our county's a good county, I think we've done a lot of good things, and the thing that I resent most of all is that the people that are here that made this county what it is, they're the ones that made this county what it is. I don't agree that we have to go outside to replace all these people, I just don't agree with it. I think that if they're here, now, you take for instance Rich Strupka, I mean, Rich is a great engineer, terrible people skills, okay, but it's a lot harder to find an engineer of that caliber than to maybe hone in his people skills and kind of get him into our system so he can deal with people a little bit better. He's a great engineer, I've never seen a better one. Andy Subject, terribly qualified, terribly intelligent, respect him 100%, I worked with him when he was just in code enforcement, and when he got his promotion and moved up, great guy, I worked with him, he's very intelligent. Whatever the reason is that he's not here, I'm not gonna get into that, because I don't think this is the place for it, but maybe those things we had to work on a little bit, to keep the people we got that are really qualified, we can't afford to lose qualified people like Andy Subject and Rich Strupka. I mean, these people are really qualified, go out in the street and try and find somebody to replace them, you can't, it's hard, it's impossible. And every one of the people that leave here usually wind up, can find a better job someplace else, or just as good a job, so that tells you something. Instead of us, you know, reaching outside, let's just look to see what we can do with the people we got, work with that, and like Darryl said, I agree with that 100%, but I don't agree that our county's in a mess, it's so terrible. Like I said, our building department has a lot of problems, man, I agree with that 100%, but I think we can work on that and get that worked out. As far as the county itself and the way that we've run the county over the years, going back to Bob Keating, Joe Baird, and, you know, Chris Moore and everybody that's been here, man, we laid down a hell of a groundwork for a great county, we have a great county. And I think that we need to be aware of that, and I appreciate that, and I don't apologize to John for the county we gave you, I think we're a good county. That's all I have to say. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Welcome.
Anybody hungry? I'm Richard Byaloski, 685 Reef Road. It's been an interesting meeting to sit through, and in some ways, a masterclass in leadership on the part of the commissioners, I appreciate that. I want to say, water under the bridge, nothing's probably gonna change, I want to echo what Joe said about Andy, he understands the environmental issues, the growth issues, the community issues, I know there was a problem, I don't understand it fully, I just wish there was a second chance, because, you know, we had Stan, who was fantastic, then we had Phil, going back, we had Bob, there was this continuity, it's lost. I mean, I could, sports analogies, Commissioner Irman, I could fill a baseball roster, plus the bullpen with the people I knew who were here two years ago, I mean, it's, you know, we've lost a lot of continuity, hopefully, something good will come out of this. The one thing I would beg to come out of this, John, would be to reach out to the Gifford community. I've been married for 56 years, I learned a little secret, apologize even when you're right, and I think an apology to Tony, Joe, and Freddie would probably go a long way, plus some action, but I'm starving, I don't want to go on any longer, I'll probably fall on my face on the way to the car, but thank you all, it was a really interesting meeting.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Brian Hayes, I'm 1525 56 Court, I'm also a local builder, and I've got a couple hours' worth of a presentation for you guys since we've been here so long. I want to echo about Scott and the building department, and particularly MGO. Funny thing is, my office sent me an email, I was sent here, they like it, we like it. It's taken us a long time to get to where we're at, but continuously trying, continuously calling the building department and getting answers, and even funny, sometimes when we called the building department, they would have to go back, I guess, to the, to MGO to get some answers, but it's simple, I don't have paper plans everywhere, an engineer, architect can send me electronically signed and sealed plans, somebody, one of my subs asked me to print out some plans, I was like, we don't do that anymore, like, you can get it on your phone, he's like, no, I want plans, so I, let's not throw that out, let's find a way to maybe make it work better, but I wouldn't throw MGO out, we like MGO, at least in my office. And- And as far as the Andy thing goes, I just would ask that you guys look into that, figure out what's going on. Andy has so much knowledge. Every time I've called Andy, he's met with me. Every time I've called Andy, he's been responsive. Exact same thing with Scott McAdam. The building department, it's not perfect. But we also have to strike a balance. We don't want to look like the county south of us, right? So it's got to be a little bit more difficult to build here. That's just, that's just the way it is. You can't have it both ways. So those of us that have been here for a long time, we know how to work through the process. The process doesn't always work. Chains, the links get broken sometimes. But there's, they always get repaired. We always learn to do something better the next time we work with them. So I just ask you guys to... There's just some great continuity, as other people have said. And I think that we're heading in the right direction. We continue that continuity. I think it's very important for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Chris Crawford, 18566 Avenue. I just wanted to point out the difference between the Florida Building Code, which is completely objective compared to our LDRs, the dinosaur of our codes that are very subjective. And there's your difference in service. The building code enforces, the building official enforces the building code. He doesn't have the subjectivity like our planners and our engineers do with our LDRs. I'm curious who the complaints are. I'm listening. I know the project you're talking about. And that project that was built there was in a non-conforming, 100-year-old flea market wooden building, tinderbox. So I understand the complaints. Your client was probably misguided from the get-go and got aggravated with the process as he discovered all the difficulties. So I don't think you should be pointing the fingers at our building official. He is effective. He enforces the building code. That's his job. MGO has been difficult to learn, once we have. I don't wait in line behind do-it-yourselfers and amateurs for an hour to turn something in anymore. I can do it through the MGO, just like that. I've learned the system, I have no problem. So I would just say Scott McAdam is a very good building official, and we're watching y'all.